Alex is here, we can go ahead.
Five o'clock today.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board and board. And we will dispense with all of our others. There wasn't anything else on there other than budget, so we will go right into budget hearings.
There's kind of some tentative schedules for some officials and department heads that would like to discuss their budget at certain times, but it's just mainly, we're just gonna kind of go through each department and not necessarily line by line, but make sure if anybody, the three of you or any of you have any questions, concerns over any, any line items in any budget, then we need to discuss those and we need to, in the next few days, get to what you would consider your final numbers that you, that you three as a group will approve for a final budget, so.
Yep.
That's the plan for the next few days, so if, unless you got something you want to start with, we'll just get right into the sheriff's budget, since he got him here first. Law enforcement sales tax fund budget starts on page one hundred. And what we did is, is the sheriff sent me back a schedule of just the few differences we had between his department request amount and the budget officer recommended amount. There's, there's not, not a lot of difference there, but.
The main is, is the salary line. So last year, you guys approved a salary change in steps, and our steps are based off four-year increments, so four years they get a step, eight years they get a step, twelve years they get a step. And what the difference is in our salary lines right now between Mark and I, are those continuing those steps in the salary? And I understand where he was coming from. He said he didn't want to adjust any of the salaries. He's gonna let you guys answer that. The other thing was, whenever I did the, whenever I did the salary adjustments in September, we did not include lieutenants, captains, or majors. So currently, the lieutenants and the sergeants are making the same pay. So what we're wanting to do is increase that, the actual cost for the steps and the, the steps alone for the civilian and sergeants and below is twenty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one, and then the salary adjustments and then the steps, step adjustments for lieutenants and above is thirty-nine thousand, I don't say that. So the total is sixty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. And there's some cents there, but I know that there's some people that don't like the cents, so I'm not gonna bring that up.
Including me.
But I think that, that was one issue. And the only other one was, I want to, I want to start increasing the GR subsidy that you guys give us to two-point-zero-four million. I want to increase that by whatever the COLA raise is. The problem is, is we're setting my, the law enforcement sales tax up to fail because we continually increase the expenditures and my revenue has flattened out. So since two thousand and eight, I think, it's been two-point-zero-four million, so I'm just requesting from this point forward that we, whatever the COLA raise is, that we, we add that to that two-point-zero-four million. I want to increase my part-time by a dollar an hour. There's no increase to the budget on that. I'll absorb that.
What, what schedule do you have up there?
Well, this is a salary schedule.
That the one you emailed to us?
Yeah, yeah. Now, I'm, what I'm looking, what I'm focusing in is your requested adjustment. So right now, you've got your professional standard lieutenant, the position is open, but it was being paid seventy-one, and you want to adjust it by seven thousand? Is that, is, okay.
Okay. So the, the lieutenants will go to seventy-eight thousand, the captains will go to eighty-five thousand, and then the major will go to, wow, I can't count that high, whatever it is.
Well, I don't think you've asked for any more. I didn't see an additional request for your major.
Well, I think, well, the major was supposed to be another seven thousand, so I'd put him at his base pay of ninety-five, and he's already at ninety-six, so.
Oh, okay.
Adjustment for him.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, he's it.
Was this scheduled in an email to us?
Yes.
When was that emailed?
This actual spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Yesterday I did, or was it like?
I sent it to you. Did I send it? Initially, I sent it on the sixth, then I sent it different, then I adjusted it yesterday and sent to you yesterday.
Yesterday.
So.
Is this my department?
Uh, yeah, there's a tab, law enforcement, updated law enforcement is what, what I'm at. So, so we've got, okay, you've got the lieutenants and the captains you're requesting. There is one civilian adjustment for your fiscal officer. You're asking for an additional adjustment?
Yes.
And then.
So go back up.
Yeah, okay.
So, no, go down.
Oh, okay.
The, right there. So you see that there's no, there's hardly any adjustments in there because those are the adjustments that you, the steps you did last year, you did in September. So all those steps that you, that we did last year, that's why we're not requesting any of there.
But here we got a captain that you're asking.
Seventy-one, right, because of the salary increase.
Okay, then, uh, what is this?
Control division guys, they just hit their eight-year mark, I think. Our four-year, I can't remember. Our four-years at the title. So because of that, the way we had it set up was, we wanted to give them a, a, a three percent increase on their salary at their four-year mark, and then another three percent at their eight-year, and another percent at twelve-year. And we adjusted all the other uniformed personnel in September.
Okay, then there's another captain.
Right.
With the adjustment, okay. And then under, what are we down to? Jail, seven oh four?
Right, and the same, yeah, same thing.
Same thing, okay, with, these are like four-year.
Right.
Adjustments, and then you got another captain.
Right.
And more four-year adjustments, okay. That is a, oh, lieutenant, yeah, okay, adjustment. Good.
What is this, what does this do? You know, there was one time, you used the term underwater when we visited one time. What, do you know how much this changes the underwater number?
We are, our, our operational budget, well, say, well, first off, our capital improvements, we lowered it. So it was three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty. I've gotten rid of a couple things, so now it's two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty, so I don't know how much that, that's gonna affect the budget quite a bit.
Okay, on page one hundred, what did you, so I know, what are, what are you taking out? Because I need to change that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Well, apparently.
Thank you.
So I changed that. So our total operational expense, we're in the red, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. That's due to salaries.
But of course, that's if you're fully staffed.
If I'm fully staffed. And I would hope that I would get that way, but I don't see it. As of Monday, I'll be fourteen down, and they have four in the hopper. So the salaries are working.
Well, do you want to discuss the specific differences or what your thoughts are on salaries, what do you?
Is it accurate to say that what the changes, salary changes we're talking about now were already, I'll put it in quotes, agreed to under the step?
Yes.
There was nothing mentioned about lieutenants, captains, or majors on that grid?
Well, not on the grid, but I think what I said during the meeting was, I need to address the lieutenants, captains, and majors, but I'll do that at the budget here, because I was more concerned about the deputies. You did agree to the steps for, and we, we subsequently paid the, anybody that was at the four, eight-year, and twelve-year mark, we paid them subsequently for their, whatever that percentage was. Now, the percentage was also, it says, adjusted minimum salary. So if the minimum salary for a deputy is fifty-three thousand, and they'd been with me for twelve years, and they were already exceeding fifty-seven, seven-seventy, then they did not get a raise. So this is, what I adjusted to was minimum, adjusted minimum salary.
Right, and then, and then one civilian request?
Oh, there was two, but.
Oh, there was two?
No, there was, but they're no longer within that.
Oh, okay. Actually, there's a schedule here. Yeah.
Inside salary, there was still some other requests?
Do you want to talk, transfer in? The, the extra four percent. I've got that in my number. Now, we are different because initially, you requested the full amount for the sheriff revolving fund, the full-time salary, but I don't think, doesn't look like there's gonna be enough money in that fund for that next year. So we, so we cut that in half. So right now, we're showing about a twenty-three-six difference between transfer in, what I recommended, but that's because of the, that salary subsidy. But I do have the four percent.
I'm, I'm just a no on that one. I mean, when we put it on the ballot, that's the way it was, that the two-point-zero-four million, I think, from general revenue with state going towards the sheriff. We've got a lot more revenue coming in with the sales tax and the federal prisoners, so we just gotta make that work, and the two-point-zero-four million subsidy should be enough. I know you disagree, but you're not gonna get it if you don't ask for it.
I think you're fair.
I don't.
I think that's a fair, that's a fair statement. It really is.
And, I, the only other thing I was gonna add is, you know, the bottom line being in red. I know we did this with your, with the previous sheriff we sat down, and it's funny because you can go out ten, twenty years, if you change one number even slightly.
Yeah.
That changes from where you're at in black and red. And, you know, maybe we need to do that exercise a little more, figure out where we could.
Well, the, the, the twenty-year plan that I got from Kristen, and I just, I've been sort of throwing numbers in it, trying to keep up with it. It wasn't too bad, and I knew that we were gonna have to address something in a couple of years, and I think it was three years. But the problem is the salaries, staffing has gone through the roof, and that's just thrown everything off.
It's, that's out everywhere. And if we're gonna compete with anything, I mean, even on our, our board, yesterday at the board meeting, I mean, we had to make a substantial adjustment to salary to make sure that we keep our, our director there. And so, you know, are they worth it? Yeah. But I'm kind of looking countywide. Your budget's a little different. We just talked about that a bit ago.
Yeah.
Yours is a little different because you got your pot of money. And so I'd rather wait till the end and talk about all the salary things, but yours is different in that manner. So on the transfer in, I just, that's my point on that part.
Help me out on what we, on the ballot. You mentioned what was on the ballot.
On the law enforcement sales tax, the half-cent sales tax to build the law enforcement center, it said that it would have the half-cent sales tax, and the two-point-zero-four million that came from general revenue for the, the sheriff's office would still be paid.
That's how much they, that's how much they were subsidizing us at that time.
At that time.
And so they just kept it at the two-point zero-four.
Did the ballot language actually say that, or that was just like the, an agreement when it was?
I think it was an agreement.
Commission and the sheriff.
I think it said, I don't remember exactly, but I thought it actually said it, the number even.
Literature we handed out said it. Literature that was handed out.
Literature doesn't matter. It matters what was in front of the voter when he checked the box. What did that ballot measure?
The ballot did not say anything about two-point-zero-four million.
Well, I, I shouldn't, let me restate. It, it does matter what was said, but what really counts is when he sat in the booth and looked at the ballot and what did he base his vote on?
And did it?
Well, it was the intention and the promise of the commission at that time.
Well, I.
Yeah, but they can't.
It was, it was to continue it. Was it continue it at a fixed cost for perpetuity?
Yes.
Or did it just say, we will continue a subsidy? Or did it say two-point-zero-four million, or whatever?
That, I don't, with inflation, I don't think there's any way you can say that's gonna stay the same.
I wanna say it said current funding. It said something similar to that.
Perpetuity is.
But that doesn't mean you can't increase it.
No, it doesn't, but well.
It maybe would.
Maybe you can't.
Say you shouldn't, yeah, if that was like the stated agreement, you probably, you know, might be difficult to reduce it, but there's no reason why you can't increase, if, if that's what you choose.
And at the time, it was supposed to be a fifty-year plan, and it was supposed to financially be solvent because it figured in the increase in sales tax, it figured in the increase for prisoners, maybe not so much.
I was gonna say, I don't know if it, I don't know if it had the federal prisoners boarding. Because that's been a nice little.
Yeah, we kept it out for a long time.
Okay, so. I just, you know, the budget back then and the budget now is quite a bit more, so I think we just gotta make it work within where it's at with the two-point-oh-four, two-point-four, whatever it is, so.
We're talking about eighty thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah.
Roughly eighty, eighty-seven, or, I don't remember.
Well, it'd be four percent of, of that number.
Here, let me, let me pull up your.
We do, we do take stuff out of that.
And you have that four percent in your budget?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Let me, let me pull it up specifically here. Uh, yeah, transfer in, two million, forty. Then we take out the computer services charge that we do for every fund, the three percent admin that we do for all sales tax funds, and then the, we, we went down, went down to twenty-five thousand, the transfer in from the sheriff revolving fund, and four percent increase there, eighty-one, eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. So that's four percent. So.
I think if you've got the budget, I would leave it, but that's just me.
I think I'm okay with the COLA, basically getting the COLA, that line gets a COLA calculation is what we're basically saying, right? I mean, what's saying?
That's what.
That's what my request.
That's the sheriff's request, yeah.
So that's gonna be like, you come back every year and request it, not in perpetuity to keep increasing it?
I think, I mean, that's very, that's my problem.
It, well, it's hard, going back, I mean, nothing's gonna go down. Everything's gonna keep going up, so.
Their sales tax revenue's going up, our federal prisoners' boarding is going up, revenues have, yeah, knock on wood.
Yeah, it's not gonna stop.
So it, it has gone up. Revenue has gone up, but also spending has too, so.
Yeah, that's the problem, is the expenditures.
And, and I know a lot of it's in the salary line right now. That's gonna be one we need to get a hold of, but, you know, if we're gonna increase that, we gotta cut back somewhere else, so.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
As am I, as am I, yeah.
It's nine and eight-thirty. All right, well, we can sit here and chew on this all day longer.
All right, well, you were good serving.
I don't know, HBA Christmas is last night. Not ready for that yet.
And then, uh.
Was that fun, that scene?
It's my last word. No!
Okay.
Hey, your batteries are dead on this one.
Well, I'll get it fixed.
Bad and salaries, that's our, that's our own differences, so. Well, the revenue, I up, I upped the interest because I think interest ra, interest revenue, because I think interest rates will stay fairly high. They might have dropped some.
I don't have a problem with anything on Mark's budget, other than the salary lines, and I don't think we have an issue with it between he and I. I just think he wants you guys to be able to make that determination.
So on salaries, we were talking about whether you had said it when we did the other salary adjustments, and I don't, I don't know whether it's said or not, but it, I think I knew it was coming, so that you'd be coming to adjust the other salaries. So I wasn't surprised at all.
I, I have to adjust the, I mean, I can't have lieutenants and sergeants making the same salary.
You're just trying to keep from sand compression. Go ahead and say it.
I'm not gonna say it, but with the sergeants and lieutenants making the same salary and sergeants getting overtime, they're really making a whole lot more money than the lieutenants. So I'm trying to be amicable. I'm not gonna use the F-word, fair. I don't like that word.
So if we put it, I mean, the number, if we put it in there, in the budget, and then we, I'm gonna throw a bunch on Sheila's lap here, but on these salary adjustments that people are wanting, I think it needs to go through HR, when you look at it and find the number, and it really, there's some objectivity to it then. And, you know, maybe you do have it all down on paper, and Sheila can look at it and go, oh, well, yeah, I verified it, this is what it should be. I don't know if this is kicking the can down three months from now, or how long this will take, but that's just kind of where I was looking at with countywide, is that we put a, basically a merit pool in there. Yours is different because yours is the sheriff's budget, like we talked about.
And, and I don't have a problem with what you're saying about, I mean, I just gave her all of my job description, so I don't have a problem with her getting it kicked in her. I don't think it's fair to those employees to wait three months to get those raises. I don't think it's fair for my lieutenants to be making the same salary.
Well, we should have done that when we did the other adjustments.
I don't have a question. And then say, the rest of you are gonna have to wait three or four months to see if maybe you're gonna get it. I don't think that's fair.
So that, the adjustments, let me get back to that screen. That was based on the steps? Those, those dollars were on the steps?
Well, so the, the, everyone but the lieutenants and above was based on steps?
Well, I think that's where the adjustments were at, were lieutenants and above, right?
The salary, so there's the step adjustments for everybody, and then there's the salary line adjustments for the lieutenants, captain, and the major, and the major actually not getting an adjustment, so, but anyway, it's those.
I mean, I think I can swallow the step adjustments, but I think the other, I was just looking at some pretty big numbers on the adjustments, and just wanted to have some kind of.
What's the total?
It's not that much, sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars for everything.
With benefits?
Yes, it's with benefits.
Your concern, one of your concerns is that sergeant, we don't make some kind of change here, sergeants are gonna make more than lieutenants.
They, they will.
With overtime?
Yes, absolutely.
Since I was enlisted in the army and I had to take orders, I would have liked that I made more than some of those lieutenants, but.
That's a, that's a whole different animal, man. That's a whole different animal, but, yeah.
Second lieutenants, or?
So in the, in everybody else, when I set up the new salary lines, I put a nine-thousand-dollar buffer in between the ranks to, to make sure that, no, we're not pushing up against, but with the lieutenants, captain, the major, I dropped it to seven thousand, right? Because I'm trying to be.
Here's, here's where I, you know, I guess the common term, this would be heartburn, is we had a jailer issue because we couldn't get him to come to work because the numbers were too low, they weren't accurate. So we raised a jailer. And because of jailers being hard to find, we raised captains, lieutenants, and everybody else because of this latter. And I, I think that's crazy. In, in the, in the business world, if a business is finding it hard to hire people to sit in that chair, and they raise that, the value of that chair, they don't go all the way to the top with that bump, bump, bump. And I wish we didn't have to follow that, the logic that we're following, that because it was hard to fill that chair, everybody who's downstream or upstream from that chair gets a bump. But that's history. That's behind this. This has gotten so complicated that an accountant can't follow. So I'm gonna follow the lead with the most experienced commissioner.
Whoa, the power! Here, Jeffrey.
You don't want me to have that?
Only on this issue.
And I, I think what you were saying was right, you know, step back, let HR look at it, make sure how that gets out of line anywhere else, you know, I think that was a good idea. We've talked about a salary study, countywide, you know, so.
So we're looking at six months then, if we're doing a salary study, we're looking at six months?
So on the, on the steps, I'm gonna, to clarify that, the difference in salary that you had, part of it was steps and part of it was just merit.
Right.
Or whatever we want to call it. I, I don't have a problem putting them on the same steps and whatever we want to call it, but I think it gives, gives them a reason to stay loyal and to stay here. So that part of it, I don't, I don't have a problem moving ahead on. And that's part of what you were talking about, is that's not really fair to do it for some and not the others.
So I just want to get this clear. So it's okay, you guys think it's okay for sergeants and lieutenants to make the same amount of money? Actually, for sergeants to make.
They don't make the same amount of money.
Yes, sir. Their starting salary is the same. Starting salary for a sergeant is seventy-one thousand, starting salary for a lieutenant is seventy-one thousand.
To be fair, you know, you, you created this job.
But I did create it. Debbie, what's your suggestion then? Wait two years? I think the last one was two years for the salary study?
I keep believing I can watch on this.
Okay, so they were both at seventy-one. I thought there was still a difference. I thought you were saying with overtime, they make.
All the sergeants with overtime is gonna make a lot more money than the lieutenants. So I guess I could make the lieutenants, captains, and majors not exempt, so they can get overtime also.
Not a decision.
I think that is a decision I can make. I don't want to.
So do we have the, the pay scale that you would be proposing?
I, I sent it to you.
Okay.
I mean, I have a.
I need to revisit that then.
I have a copy here in front of me.
So, do you know when you sent that? Was that early when you were talking about the budget thing?
I have no idea. It could have been in August.
Because I mean, what, yeah, why, why am I gonna get to be lieutenant? You're gonna give me extra duties and no extra pay. That's valid argument. That's fair. So, but the number, there was like a seven thousand and different, when I'm looking up there at those proposed.
So is the seven thousand dollar pay adjustment for lieutenants, captains, and major?
They're gonna bump them all seven.
Yes.
And how much of that seven is a step?
None of it. So the seven thousand is a, would be, so the seven thousand is the, the salary adjustment, and then if you look at, there's only two people that's getting a step of the steps, and that's, I don't know who they are because it's not in here, but there's two people getting a salary adjustment. And the total cost, man, you gotta remember we're including the retirement social security.
You guys want a copy of this?
Yeah, please.
Yes.
This is the one you're talking about, right?
I don't think it has, does it have lieutenant, captain? Yeah, it's this one here. Let me go print this.
Okay, yeah, that, can, if I can get that in front of me and see that again, I.
That's what was passed.
This was the August, okay. I'm gonna make a copy of that, too.
I found one with mine.
Oh, cheers.
Highlighted comment.
And Mark, you don't have any of this in the budget?
No.
Okay.
No, I've got current salaries plus four percent.
Okay.
In my budget numbers.
We can go back over there to that budget, I was just wondering what was changed. Yep?
This one?
Yeah.
So the transfer in.
Uh huh.
interest I increased, that was just a slight adjustment, so the revenues and expenditures would be the same, cause that money goes in and out. Uh, then here's the salaries. Seven oh one, we're off by eighty-four hundred. Uh, and then the benefits, of course. Uh, seven oh two, we're close, there's not much, yeah, there wasn't much adjustment there. Seven oh three, it's not that much different. Seven oh four, we're off by like twenty-two thousand, yeah.
So really, there wasn't any other line items that you asked much about?
No, I, just that one for a thousand, I think it's just because I, I would've put the three thousand in there, I just, I made a few mistakes putting numbers in, so.
Do you wanna, so you're doing it all on this spreadsheet, you're not really doing anything, right? Cause you haven't really moved it to commission yet.
I have not moved anything to commission yet, yeah, so. So, yeah, like John said, we're off sixty-nine thousand different, so. Yeah.
Do you have a copy of this, don't you, Mark?
Thank you.
Uh, sure. Sorry. I guess what we could do is put that difference in this, kinda like we did last year, salary reserve line item, and, if approved by you, the commission, then we take it out of that salary reserve and put it in, put it in salaries.
As you know, every, uh, salaries really don't change with the four percent or whatever COLA that you would give, until the first check comes in, anyway. Cause that's the first full A period.
In the new year.
So, John up here at the top, we got it, the jailer, the sergeant, and then we got the lieutenant, the major down below that. I see seventy-one for sergeant and seventy-eight for lieutenant.
Yeah, that's the, that's my request, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So, did it make copies of what it, I made a copy of what you had, did you?
Yeah, I know, I had it upside down, so all I got was blue papers, sorry. I have people for this. If you look at that.
That's great, sorry.
If you look at this, you can see that the sergeant, lieutenant, same salary, that's a current schedule.
Yeah, this is what, uh, that's kinda what I was wanting to see, so.
Hence my comments back then, but this will not work.
Yeah, I don't know if I didn't catch that. Cause it would've made sense to have some kinda difference in there, back then even. But I don't know how much it needs to be between the two of them.
He was ready to do a second.
What, what's the date, uh, of this?
I, I can, uh, when, when, you told me whenever I printed that up?
No, I, well, I mean, when did this week?
When, will it come into effect, January one?
This is what was, appeared in August, so it had to change between, probably a bunch of time.
Yeah, in August, September, I was working on that.
It, aren't, aren't these steps in, dollar amounts as we look forward, based upon zero COLA?
Yes.
So when this COLA added in, all these numbers change?
Yes, so it'll be, uh, for instance, it would be, if I had four years in, I would get the three percent for the step, and then whatever the COLA is there.
I mean, you guys did exactly approve that, as far as, you approved what he brought to you, and then plus, we asked about COLA, and he said that would be on top of it, and then, but, um, we didn't talk about whether the scale would change every year to the COLA. Is that what you're asking here?
Well, I, you know, I, I guess historically, we lived in a time when, when we were living at, at two percent inflation rates, not too many years ago. And COLAs were not a significant piece of discussion. Those times have changed. If you, if you, I, I served on the school board for many years, and there was this hu- huge schedule. You come in with a bachelor's, and one year you make this, the next year you make this, you go out and you get a half of a, a master's, another eight, I don't know how many hours it takes, and you get a bump there. It was all, you know, the schedule forever was, somebody could sit there and say, if I stay here twenty years, this is what, and get my master's, this is what I'm gonna make, you know, in the lower right-hand corner after I've got it. And today, COLAs just mumble jumble that schedule to pieces. Yesterday's dollar is not worth. Today's dollars, or today's dollar is not worth yesterday's dollars, I don't know.
So before we made the adjustments in August, what was the difference between, on the scale, between sergeant and lieutenant? Was it, uh, three thousand, or?
Seven thousand.
It was seven thousand before, so when we made the adjustments, that just brought them all the way up to, so we went from sixty-four to seventy-one, basically, on the sergeants?
Yes, I believe that's correct, but I don't know, it's not sitting in front of me. What was it?
Uh, it's five thousand for correction officers, three thousand for deputies, uh, five thousand for corporals, six, seven thousand for, it was, it was going up for sergeants, seven thousand for sergeants.
So, what's seven thousand for sergeants?
Yes, the rest of them were less.
Yeah, I didn't catch that one, we were, we were going over that, I was seeing that coming down the road like a Mack truck. So, I, I agree there needs to be a difference between them, and otherwise, why would you wanna be a lieutenant and have additional duties and not have any change in pay?
More flexibility.
I mean, if you're just gonna give me a title and more money, that's great, but I would, I would expect more, you know. It gets easier after this one, right, Mark?
Not so sure about that.
I mean, if you wanna decide on salaries, you wanna wait till the end, I mean, obviously, this will affect what you're gonna do forward on the rest of them, so, have it up.
At right now, I think COLAs should be the same for, uh, across the board, right?
Yeah, COLAs are COLAs, I mean, they're, I think, you know, not to be selfish about it, but, I think it's been determined that elected officials can have a COLA.
Yes.
If everybody gets a COLA.
Right, right.
So, uh, anyway, that's sort of locked in.
I mean, we can table it, we can make at the very end.
There's like fourteen other positions, though, right, that are wanting adjustments.
What, I don't know how many it was, you'd have to look on there.
I'm looking at the.
If we use the schedule, that, that was approved in September.
That sounds about right, yeah. With the, uh, lieutenants and captains, and then the, the four-year, yeah, that sounds about right, about fourteen.
Four, eight, twelve years, yeah.
So what you have is, make a change in, or adding the three positions to the schedule, going with the steps that were approved, and the ones that, that's enough, basically. And how many of them?
So, we can put a salary reserve line for the difference, if you wanna go there.
I kinda like that better.
I can tentatively agree on that, we can move, go ahead and move forward. That's the only, only sticking point right now, I think, right?
I'm fine, same with what you just said.
There's fifteen.
Fifteen. So what would the, what would be the, number then I would get for the salary merit, whatever the, that?
In the salaries, it would be the fifty-four or five, and then you'd have to still figure, I guess you could put it all in there.
How many lieutenants you got?
Two.
Two, how many captains?
Three, I just lost one.
Five.
So we're in the process, actually.
Well, how many positions you have, count in the open ones, how, how many?
Three captains, two lieutenants, one major.
Okay, so, basically, those are the six positions, and I see that there is a, a problem, if you, you know, we can try to fix them with whatever number, you're wanting to go seven thousand like you did the sergeant in August, so.
Yeah, you can pick that out, and then put the rest in the reserve, whatever you wanna do.
I don't have a final answer right now, you're not gonna be here tomorrow, I mean, you can be if we have to have you, but.
Yeah, I will be now, I'll be here all day tomorrow, and all day today.
Just give me some time to chew on it, I don't, the only thing I can do right now is arbitrarily pick a number and go, I like this number better. Why? I, I, I can't have it, I think there needs to be a difference between them. If it was seven thousand before, then I, I don't, that's a, an argument, or we can say, let's put something in there. So. Yeah, um, kinda high-centered right now on this, so if we wanna move on, we can still talk about this, and we're not making a decision necessarily on it yet, and we're not saying yes or no. Said, I, I don't have a magic number. But I see exactly where, you know, the sheriff's coming from, where his numbers came from, and it, it's a valid argument, so. That's on the lieutenants, captains, and majors.
So, the reason why we went with seven thousand is cause, uh, a lot of, if you look at different agencies, they have a ten thousand dollar separation. That way, it accounts for a corporal getting his salary raise, or get the COLA raise, and whatever, so it doesn't push right up against the sergeant's salary, so, the five thousand didn't work, uh, it only worked, I think, for two years, and then they were pushing right on the door of the start salary of the other ones. That's why I wanted the nine thousand between the uniform personnel, and that's why I pushed it to seven thousand for the, uh, lieutenants. Uh, captains and majors is, it should've been nine thousand, but I didn't wanna spend that much money, so I said seven thousand instead.
Okay. That makes sense.
Anything else? Move on, we're done?
Yeah.
Should we have any other?
Are you guys okay with the capital list, because usually that, that is.
Oh, yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Once it's in, it's probably, it's not like you're off the cap.
I think I'm fine with the capital list, the sheriff knows the needs of, the capital needs of his operation. It's a little hard to follow what it was to what it's going to, three twenty, say, three thirty to two seventy-four, because some of the combinations are a little bit changed, but,
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with going completely.
Well, there was a, the, if you look at it, there on the left is everything that they were, that we were gonna put in for the cost, and then the next column is, if it's zero, I didn't, I didn't move it into the.
Yeah, but some of the, some of the designations, you, they, they were clumped together before and separated now, weren't they, they're, they're not quite lined across.
It's a little different, but.
Like computers. There's two separate lines for computers.
There's two separate, yeah.
That was, that was Brian's.
See, there's computers and access point, that's the second line item, and then, and then at the very end, there's another computers line, yeah, so, his, this is probably a little better schedule, you got them right together, yeah, so.
I, I don't wanna argue that you can't lower these numbers, which he has, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
It's just a red light to go, so, is that what?
Red light to go?
I'm good, yeah.
Well, I mean, a green light to go.
Green light, okay.
Green light.
Okay, alright.
My hearing's getting bad, I said.
So, we're all okay then, except for the salaries, salaries on the other?
That's your, that's sheriff's number, he's got to work with them, and some things change. Besides, something you need is more important, or came, comes up, then something falls off that list, so.
Okay. Alright.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff.
Moving my computer, I'll be back.
Is, uh, Greg still around? Yep. He is lurking, okay, okay.
Hey, John.
Need a break, or go?
No, let's go, we'll go get Greg.
Okay, yeah, I think Greg's.
Ready to stand up here, sure.
Yeah, okay, Greg's is on, uh, page forty, fifty, actually. Ouch. Let's go to.
Is there any besides salary you wanna talk about?
Well, again, I made a mistake, tr- transferring a money, uh, an amount from department requested to budget officer under, uh, the annex building, uh, what's that first one? Instead of ten thousand, I put a thousand, uh, is that maintenance, what's the first line? I can't remember, that supplies, okay, yeah, well, I'll change that up, back up to ten thousand, I can't imagine you can get by with a thousand.
And it's only gonna go up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only gonna go up.
So, yeah, everything below salaries, I mean, what were you putting in, ten, twenty percent increase on, on a lot of them, just because of prices?
Yeah, majority of it's going up. You know, back flows are going up, testing on those went up, but everything's, like, majority of the numbers I put in were numbers that I can get by with, I mean, our elevator costs are gonna go up again next year, our fees for the elevator service are gonna go up. So that's all taken account for in there, unless, uh, fire department, fire, whatever the company is that gives us our safety tags, raises it again, so. I tried to get as much as I could get in there, I don't know anything about, I've heard, uh, there might be more costs going up, there might be electric and gas going up, but I haven't heard anything more on that, so. But, we'll just go with the numbers and see what happens.
Yeah.
Will you go over to the budget, or something, is there any lineups, is there a change in, from yours to the commission, besides that?
Yeah, that mistake, I got, I'll, that's it, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you had some good shit, too.
Uh, I had a note to myself, I guess the first time we went through here, about something on three nineteen with that, three nineteen add generator, what was that, uh?
Three nineteen?
The new, uh.
Oh, we had it added to the bu- uh, to our contract.
Okay. So, did that raise a number in here somewhere, then?
Probably under professional.
Under professional services, yeah.
Yeah.
Raised it some, yeah.
Equipment services contract.
Equipment service.
Oh, okay.
So, we went up to twenty thousand, eight hundred.
Okay, that was the explanation for the.
Seventeen thousand.
Five hundred, okay.
Amended budget from last year.
And back flows went from, station comes on, we'll have some more there, uh, so it's just, it keeps snowballing.
Speaking of snowballing, did we ever bid out snow removal? We've done grass cutting, we did that one time.
We did one time, and, uh, when Jeff, or, you know, when Jeff was, Chris was still here, and it was pretty high. We only had one bid back on it, and I think that was, I think it might've been Gaines', but I'm not sure on that, it was way up there.
I didn't remember what it was, but, I don't know, it was just something that seemed like it would be probably more efficient for somebody else to do, and it would take it off of our hands, our maintenance guys can stay on maintenance stuff, and not have to worry about the summertime, and, what, how long does it take to do the grass, you know? Couple days a week, every week, we lose them.
Half-day, uh, at, uh, half-day, usually at, uh, prayer, EMS, and.
Just look at all the equipment we have, you know, so.
It's all in good shape, too, so.
Wouldn't have to have, wouldn't have to keep it, maintain it, store, so.
I know Public Works, you know, was talking about our lives, but they said they weren't gonna do our sidewalks, and. And it's almost like the side, when it snows, it just keeps snowing and keeps snowing. So you've gotta keep going over it and putting chemicals down and stuff. I don't know if we could get a contractor who would do it that diligently that often.
That would be the biggest figure.
People do it all the time. All kinds of businesses have to snow remove. They, they don't close down just because it's snowing. Keep going. I don't know, I just think it's something that'd be worth looking into.
We can bid it. I, I, I think it's gonna be prohibitive, but that's just me. I know. Seems like we get a lot of snows on Sundays and I see Greg up here with his, out plowing the sidewalks. First we'll end up with new, more sidewalks there at the new EMS building as well. That hill's gonna be a pitch.
Yeah, and then that parking lot we're renting, we got that now to clean too, so.
Oh. Would that be a Public Works?
It's gonna be too tight for them to get in there with their big trucks, so we'll just have to do it. I looked at it with Kevin, so.
So in the future, you guys.
We can, we can bid it, Jeff. I, I don't.
See if you can find that old bid. I mean, that should get us in the ballpark. I'm just, I don't remember what it was.
I will look and see if I can find it. No guarantees.
Anything else on any of the non-salary items?
It's just kind of a guess.
It is a lot of guessing in this department, because you gotta pay the utility bills, you gotta pay the trash bills, whatever, yeah.
If it breaks, you gotta fix it.
That's, you see a lot of transfers this time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So salaries?
I approached you guys to come to eighteen across the board. Um, I did, I took it, did the four percent cola for the lowest individual. And then whatever the difference was between that and the eighteen dollars is how I figured everybody else's numbers.
So basically you want to get to a minimum of, uh, say thirty-seven, eight?
Somewhere around there.
That's eighteen dollars an hour?
Yeah.
That's for your least experienced person who started, uh, three months ago?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And we're teaching him. He's learning. I think everybody likes him. I haven't heard any complaints yet, so.
So that total request would be the cola for your department would be about eleven-two. And you're asking for additional adjustment of twenty-six-six?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be in the same place I was a while ago, throw it in a miracle and then Sheila, hold on. I, I think when Sheila gets done with it, it's gonna be at the eighteen. But I just, I think that gives us something to actually go on, so. That's just kind of where I was at with it.
I'm probably there with you, but the math of eighteen times two thousand eighty is just a little over thirty-six, right?
I don't have.
Thirty-seven, four-four.
I'm sorry.
He's at eighteen dollars seventeen right now for the lowest on here.
And there's thirty-six dollars, or three hundred and sixty dollars in there for a phone bill.
Oh, yeah, there's a cell phone.
So why?
I, I use your old spreadsheet. I don't know. I put the numbers in. Eighteen.
Twenty-eighty.
Times twenty-eighty.
So are you taking the amount?
Thirty-seven, four.
Thirty-seven, four, forty as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So what, what gets other, what gets people up to forty-two thousand and change then? What, like the last line on there?
Did you take it what they're over their pay grade, the starting pay grade, whatever they're over, add it to the thirty-seven, four, forty, I think?
Yeah, I just.
Keeping the spread or something?
I kept the spread, yeah.
Okay, so that makes.
I think.
Yeah, I kept the spread. I just, whatever the difference was, I'm the lowest person. I went ahead and did that across the board.
Okay.
That way we're not just favoring compressing every time.
And then what would that do with your deputy director?
It's every, same thing. He got the same thing as everybody else. We did the four percent and then, uh, he's at a little over fifty.
Right under fifty without the cell phone, okay.
Okay, so there's an adjustment there?
Yeah, it's adjustment across the board for everybody.
Just, what was brought to my attention, I missed it on the sheriff's, so. Watching that closer now, compression, you know. He's got his earphones in. He's not listening to me. Hurt my feelings? Okay. Yeah, that's kind of where I was at with that, as far as.
Put it in a salary pool.
And let's, it's gonna be a busy year for Sheila.
But that's why we have her. So if, if we just ignore or not use her, then it, yeah.
That it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you want to talk capital with Greg again?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pages add on.
One eighteen. It's back in the back there.
And I'm not suggesting you give a approval on this now. You guys have that, what this sales tax is to let Greg come back to you. And there are other departments involved in these requests too, so not just Greg's, but the high dollar ones are probably Greg's.
I don't think anything belongs on this schedule that's less than X thousand dollars. I'm not sure what X is, but we don't need a small hand blower of four hundred dollars on our capital improvement sales tax.
Sorry, sir. I just have, that was my capital project for myself, not the, not the other.
And we have the recorder we're working on.
Just.
Yes.
Kind of the way the schedule's always been.
I understand, but, but to me, uh, to, to, to put a five-year capital improvement sales tax, is this, is this, this is, no, this is, is this.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's a five year, yeah. It's renewed every five years.
Yeah, you know, when we tell the public we're gonna collect, is it five million a year? What is it?
Fifteen percent of the.
For the total?
Total capital improvement sales tax is five or six million bucks a year.
Uh, more than that.
It's about eight.
Eight?
Eight, eight million a year, fifteen percent of it goes here and then we're listing things that cost four hundred dollars. We're wasting our, we're wasting ink.
You want that in some other small separate line item?
Somewhere else.
Capital, other equipment, something like that?
miscellaneous or something.
Okay.
Thought that's where you used to put it.
Well, we, basically if the value of it doesn't last five years or more of what we're buying, it doesn't come out of capital. It never has, but he just.
I understand, but this, this is, this is under my penny philosophy.
You'll never see it again, sir.
Well, we scratched some and then we're working on some of the recorders. I have a note on new postage machine. So do, do we know a price on that?
It's about, what we figured it's about fifteen thousand, but, um, when we looked at the current carrier, but we would have to bid it.
Okay.
But I'll wait to come back and ask for some issue next year. It's kind of end of life at the end of next year is what I understand.
Oh, so you don't want that in added this year?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you do want it?
Yeah. Well, I'll come back and ask you if we can bid it.
Put in like fifteen thousand? Okay, all right. Then let's say under building maintenance, what do you want out of there? Just those two, the small blower, hand blower?
Yeah.
New truck? Nope?
Oh, yeah, that truck's gotta stay on the list. It's just gonna fall off.
Right, no, no, now I'm asking, what do you want on there? Yeah, you want the new truck?
Yeah, the true, new trucks.
That stays, okay. The floor machines, you want those on there? They should.
Take them off.
Five thousand.
Take them off.
Take them off?
Take them off.
It's one of those things I'm.
They've been in your request for like five years.
I wanna buy them, but I don't wanna buy them because I've not been in VCT anymore, so.
Okay, so take them off. Okay, so the only thing, equipment wise, you're asking for is a new truck?
Yeah.
Where are those floor machines? Just to strip them?
Strip and wax, strip wax and buffing.
Yeah, I don't remember. We just did some down at the lines club. I forgot how much it was. Have somebody come and do it. So, you know, for the price of the machines, we might be able to pay somebody to come and do it once a year, however often.
And we're, we're not doing the VCT anymore. We're using the vinyl planks. We just don't have wax and buffs, so.
Yeah, I think I would agree with you there. And then the truck, we were talking about that earlier. He's got a couple different ideas on that, so that.
Twenty-eight-five, an okay number?
I don't know on that anymore.
Seems kind of low.
Thought I put thirty-eight-five.
Thirty-eight-five, okay. Yeah, it seems low.
Unless you get a used one, but.
A used one's not gonna be cheaper. Have you seen the price of them things lately?
All right.
No, they're in bad shape.
Forty thousand?
It is.
We're looking at just either halftime or three-quarter ton regular cab and no.
I'd just put a forty in there. I think that'd be closer.
All right.
Nothing special.
Okay.
Yeah, he was looking at.
Frank, frank windows.
Do they make those anymore? Those are old farm trucks. I don't think they make a farm truck anymore.
Okay, then go over the building projects again, but since you're involved in that. We want the elevator module and Carnegie, Carnegie building. That's been in there for like five years.
As long as I've been here, that's been on there.
I don't want to touch because if we go to do that, we're gonna have to add sprinklers, fire, uh, detection, all kinds of other stuff. And that's gonna take that number and double it.
So take it out? You don't want to address it next year?
We'll see if we need to do it next year.
So take it out at twenty-twenty-four, go.
And again, this is just a placeholder total, so things are gonna change as needs change throughout the year, so.
I mean, yeah, it could be like the sheriff's building, you know, he could lose a rooftop. We have to go in and replace all those rooftops next year. We don't know that, so. Does that come out of this or?
No, that's.
He's got his own money.
He's got his own money. Okay. Health building, they got their awnings, right?
All of it's done.
Uh, paint exterior and repairs, still want that in there?
Yes.
Replace outdoor siding, leave that in?
We had that twice. I had to get in there twice. Cause you got, we got paint exterior and repairs on price and then I guess somebody else put, replaces the outdoor side in.
I thought I was just going off your list.
I think I had it twice in there, but maybe I did.
Is that different? Siding's different from painting?
Yeah.
I mean, do they both need to be in there? Okay, all right. Sprinkler system, leave that in?
I didn't know anything about a sprinkler system, sir. So I'm assuming they've been in there.
So we're adding a sprinkler, not a sprinkler system now, is there?
I guess this is for their shrubs and their lawn.
Is this the fire suppression?
No.
Uh-oh, cause that.
Outdoor sprinkler system.
That's the irrigation more than it is sprinkler. Well, it does sprinkle, but.
Okay.
Sprinkler is.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
I had a note about properly maintained and I didn't.
I assume it's out, outdoor irrigator.
That's what I'm thinking it is too.
Maybe get a clarification on it.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't put it in, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't have it on my spreadsheet. I did put, replaced the lawn sprinkler out front so we get some grass, so it doesn't look so bad.
It looks pretty tacky.
Yeah, so.
Shepherd's building, floor drains, hundred and fifty thousand, still want that in there?
I think, like Jeff and I talked, we're just gonna let it go for right now.
Take it out?
Well, we put some different things there to try to mitigate the water issue.
The water and then, uh, cover the drains with the steel blades, so.
And it may get back on the list any year. We haven't had any rain in so long, we don't know what, if it's gonna work.
Take it out, okay.
Yeah.
Old jail, tear it down, the building, what do you want to put in?
I, I, we can't just tear it down. We, I mean, we need holding cells for the sheriff. We need the Sally port. So, yeah, tear it down, then we're gonna have to do some, some additions to it, just to make it work until we do replace.
You just want to put a placeholder number in there for next year?
I just think that needs to stay on there.
Need to leave it on there, but I think.
At a million dollars, just leave it on there?
It was substantially less when we had Aaron's, but that's not.
I think the term ought to be demo instead of tear down. And that's a tear down anyway. We cry, why don't we tear it?
Well, you know, we had Johnny Paycheck stayed there in nineteen seventy-eight, that's.
You better stop talking now. You're, you're getting to historical consequences.
But we can put a plaque up.
That one million dollar mark's not gonna do it, cause tearing it down and then we'll have to build the Sally port or tear it down to the Sally port and put a roof on it.
Holding cells, holding cells are gonna be an issue too.
Now that's included with the Sally port, so I, I just think it's gonna be a big number and.
Yeah, and you, we don't know where to find more man, electrical lines, water lines, sewer lines, who knows?
And you can have Stan along in on this too.
Put demo building, et cetera. Put a placeholder there, just.
Or implode it, like implode it.
Well, we just keep letting it go the way it is. It'll fall in on its own.
It's getting there.
That thing is not.
How do you want to term it? Demo?
It might get moldy. It's not.
Demo.
Demo, et cetera, et cetera.
Comma, et cetera. Okay.
I, I think we need to see what we're doing with the youth center and what kind of money we spend on that and then where we're at from there. You know, I, I think demo the old jail and get the new, new stuff set up. That way we can take care of the other old jail, or old courthouse. Cause there's a lot of mechanical issues over there that can have to get tested too.
Big bucks.
And if you really want to sit down and have fun, we can sit down and have a twenty-year long-term plan for what we see over there. I don't know if you got that much money to take care of it in five years.
Okay, next one. Adams building, need to replace the rooftop unit still?
Yeah, that's the one we didn't do. We were just gonna try to hold off for as long as we could. According to the guys, the AC compressors both went out in it. The coil looks like somebody, like, uh, uh, somebody from Blackbird's garage was up there beating with hammers. So, uh, and the heat exchangers getting real fit on it.
Leave it in, forty-two thousand?
That's gonna be probably high, but yeah.
That will be high?
I'm hoping it'll be high. I hope it'll be a lot cheaper than that.
All right. Everything else is?
Public Works.
Something else, yeah, not you, so. Okay.
Probably tornadoes, but we didn't own the building at the time, though.
Okay, anything else you want to talk about on that list right now? Move on?
No, we've got the recorder we're working on, so that can, I don't know if we want to take it off of there.
Steve walked in first, I think.
I'm sorry.
I think Steve walked in first, but.
Is he on here?
Oh, oh, you're, oh, you're talking about the list, oh. Gotcha.
The rest of it, somebody else needs to help us with whoever sent it here.
Yeah, as far as the recorder, it was gonna, this Judy's behind me now. She wasn't here earlier. I was gonna get with her. After talking with Jeff about the cabinets, I was just gonna have her go out. You said a little help on those cabinets?
Yeah, I just got a price on it, so we knew what we were dealing with.
Good, big dollar, all that?
So that'll be coming off?
It should be on. It's, it's under what that amount was. We were just talking about it. We were talking about capital during the first budget talk, so. That's why I went down there and looked at it and said, I'll get you a price on it. And we got a price together, so. Just do it in Greg's lap from here.
Jeff said he'll do it on a Saturday.
I ain't doing it on Saturday. I'm doing it on a regular day.
Okay.
Alright.
That'll be a teaching situation for him, teacher, do cabinet work, but.
I charge for that.
I've seen his work, he's good.
Courts, we're trying to do something with the large courtroom.
Right, yeah.
Well, we went over and looked at it, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, before we got done talking about that. And there's some wallpaper that's been painted and stuff, so we're, we're just talking today about it. See if there's some way to get that wallpaper set back down. It's a place where it's bubbled, and I think, I think there's some things we can do with it, so. Anthony's young, we can get him up all that or that tall, right? So that's.
I think everything else?
Move on?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Chairs are being fixed or replaced or redone.
Right, yeah.
Didn't last year, so we don't know what it is yet, but can you put in like?
We gotta, yeah. Right, right, so.
You already talked about it?
Yes, I made a. Do you want to talk about anything else? Salaries, anything?
I thought we already talked about it.
You, you just had, you had three small, no, yeah, one, one, one of the two.
That's all, that's all we have.
He's asking for one thousand for one, two thousand for another, one thousand for third, so total four thousand, he's asking for.
We'll take whatever you give us. If you want to give us more of a full, I mean, that's up to you. Whatever you all, if you're gonna give four percent, I think that's pretty nice, too. Now, I'd like to pull these two toes up, those three up for sure, if you can do it.
That's same way on, throw it into a merit pool at the end, and then have Sheila look at the positions again, so.
I think you can probably bring them more in line with where everybody else is.
Anyway, on, just go over on page thirty-one, county clerk's budget, uh, under have a grant, revenue, and then have expense. We just, just overlooked putting any numbers in this year, and we asked for budget adjustment, because he spent money, well, he got money and spent it, but. I guess what happens is you don't know the exact number until January, so till right after the budget's approved. So we're, so what I'll do is add a placeholder number, twelve thousand, is twelve or anything more.
No, what's the last year, or two years ago? It's always been around twelve-five.
Yeah, uh, okay, so put a little higher, like thirteen, fourteen, just so it's every, it's covered, but it's in and out.
Even number years that, that count.
We get it every year.
Well, this have a grant is about the same every year, right? Yeah.
So they used to give it to us at our conference. So we went to September conference, they give us our grant money right then, and since the new Secretary of State, we don't get it till the end of the year. So I don't know why, but it's always really late. Well, we're already in budget process, so last year we got the grant, but we already had all this.
Yeah, we could, we should have put a number in there last year, we just didn't, but now we'll just put an estimated number in there.
But we should get it.
But it's same top and bottom, it does affect the bottom line.
What's have stands for?
Help America Vote Act. Back in twenty-twenty, two thousand two, when they bought all the electronic equipment.
Well, Hanging Chad was two thousand.
Or two thou, not twenty-twenty, two thou, I meant two thousand.
In two thousand, when the Hanging Chad came, they made everybody buy electronic equipment. That's the Help America Vote Act. They put all that money into it, and you got all this equipment. Now, that was our first electronic voting vote act.
That's a good trivia question.
I'm glad I knew the answer.
And, and again, I would point out, this is, uh, twenty-twenty-four is an election, big election year, so your, your numbers are higher on election expense on both revenue and expenditure side, so.
Look about a five-minute recess if we could. Thank you all.
Thank you.
She's coming sometime, yeah, nine-thirty-ish or so, maybe. I, I just, you know, I just put in some times, yeah, tentative times.
So we have discussed your, the main topic of that. Problem for us is we have. We have.
John, I think about it.
If it has an original signature or, right, then no, the state hasn't, we do not normally check that. Secretary of State and the website can actually do that. We don't do that. We didn't just, we didn't wish it to have. We say, you don't, you don't wish one, because most women to do that, because of what's going on. And then we miss one, it becomes more liable, so we need to use opinion on that. It becomes more liable if you're setting up a standard checking it, and if one of your employees don't, and it's not valid, so. Right now, it's not a statutory requirement for us to do that. I don't know, next year, something will change, we're gonna check that, we're gonna ask to do that, but when it comes in, it's in documents, it's signed, it's authorized, dated, passed that part, which is. As far as we know, it's valid, it looks out. I don't know, but it's going to become a law of that, because they, they're gonna get twice within a couple months of part two. That's the reason, and that's what they're doing. Their office, they're going to be, they're gonna go down.
Are you still awake?
Yeah, yeah, I had seen that at practice last Sunday.
Holding off right now, but I think we need to let him know something today or tomorrow. I'd like to give him an answer today, because he's got something he's supposed to be at tomorrow. So, like I said, I don't have the magic number. I, I don't know how we, we missed this whenever we were in August. Debbie said she caught it. She probably mentioned it to me, but I saw something shiny. Yeah, so I think we gotta do something with it. I'm not sure what yet.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not, the tenants should make more, whatever, makes, makes perfect sense.
I would just like to have a reason for enough, you had seven, because that's what it was before, so I understand where it's going from. But there was, there was a, that's a. What do you have, three, two, and one, so that's six changes there. And there was about fifteen other ones that he was wanting adjustments to.
Those were like, those were four, four, eight, twelve year. It was four years, so.
That was just a adjustment, though, that wasn't a.
Right, it had nothing to do with.
Okey-dokey.
We got the recorder here, so let's, uh, yours starts on page.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, okay. Okay, I'm, again, another one of my mistakes. I missed an, an equipment service contract, thousand dollars, just didn't get transferred over to. Budget officer recommended, just an oversight. Everything else, I mean, what, what I did with your, the in and out fees, I've just made some adjustments to get the revenue number and the expenditure number the same. At least on budget. I understand there's some timing differences, but it doesn't, it won't end up the same as actual, but as far as budget purposes, that. That means to me that if you put them the same, there's, it's a net effect of zero, because that, that's money that just, fees you collect that have to go out, so, yeah. So for the budget, I like for that to be equal, so it has no net effect on, on the bottom line of the budget, so. So those are the changes I made, and then, uh, for salaries, now, for some reason, mine came up higher than yours, but I think it.
Yeah, I took my sheet home. I don't have that with me, but I do know what I, I'm done with it, if you have questions on it. So what I basically, and I did this in July, and I just requested the four percent across board with an additional twelve hundred. My goal was to get everybody at forty. And that's based on the in-house compression I was kind of facing a little bit there, and also based on trying to get an employee for three or four months. Everybody wanted to start at forty, and I did do some checking with other recorder offices, and they were starting between, most of them were starting at forty-one, forty-two, unless they had greater experience. So I felt going four percent with an additional twelve hundred to help those who weren't at the forty was being conservative, so that, that's the request I put in.
So does this look right now? There were some mid-year, you did at get and, and approved a little bit of mid-year raises.
With the exception that I didn't receive any additional funds. I've never received additional funds. I've always juggled what I had.
Right.
So that's a little different than receiving additional.
Right, but we're, I'm just showing kind of what happened here, you know, because, just show where everybody's at, where they started in twenty-twenty, in the beginning of the year, so. So, so basically what happened with Diane Vogel, uh, there was some additional money in the middle of the year, so this is her current salary. Cola, you want to get, like you said, you want to get to a minimum of forty thousand, so you're asking for a little extra for both her, and then also your newest employee who's started, or will start?
She started Monday, and she does have some experience, so it's not like she's starting from ground floor, so.
So you're, you're, so you're asking to get her to forty thousand with a little bit extra adjustment above the cola?
Correct.
And then for everybody else, it's cola only?
Yes, so doing merits, because they all deserve a merit, but I was going conservative, so.
Just want to make sure I got your request accurate.
Yes, you do.
Plus, you're asking for a cell phone stipend for your chief deputy?
I did, so I, I had asked Brian for a cell phone for myself and chief deputy, and he said at this point that he, he would be able to give me one with commissioner approval. But he's not sure about chief deputy, and when I looked at the stipend that was given countywide at six hundred dollars, I had mentioned to Brian, it's actually cheaper to give her a phone. Because you're about a hundred and twenty dollars less a year than this six hundred.
Well, we give out small, we give out smaller cell phone stipends, like the maintenance people only get like three sixty, yeah.
Okay.
And, so.
Okay, I didn't see that, so.
Is that it?
That's it, yeah, everything else is good. Usually in December, I start doing transfers. I try to kind of. I try to wait as much as I can, so we're not doing like ten dollars, fifteen dollars, like, like that, but we have been this month, just a little bit here and there. So, otherwise, everything in the budget is just a little bit maybe more than last year. Most of it's the same, but because of there were some increases. GFI, things like that, just a little bit, but I think I'm pretty much on budget from last year of what I requested.
I don't think so.
And per great conversation just now, Jeff, I can go ahead with the installing of the cabinet?
Yeah.
Do I need to speak with them, or?
Just get ahold of Kristin at the Bell, go pick out the colors. There's a couple of different door style options and colors. Then you'll need to get a sink and a faucet, too, so it's still under that, well, under what we had budgeted.
Okay. Good, yeah, that'd be great.
And maybe a sink that, or faucet that's not leaking.
Yep, get our cups out of boxes, that'd be great. They'll love it, okay. Yes, and it was under, well, under the twenty-five hundred, so.
Yeah, that's kind of along the lines of what Harry was saying. Don't even need that little stuff on the list if we're gonna do it. Let's get a price on it and move on.
Do you still need two office chairs? Is it too late to get those this year? They were in last, they were in this year's budget, too.
Yeah, I don't replace those unless somebody complains of a pack issue or if a chair breaks, so I, I just carry those over. So that I would have it included if I should need it, but no, I don't need them currently.
It sounds like the commission wants to maybe start taking some of those small items out of that capital list, and maybe we'll add another line item to, uh, the seven hundred budget of just like furniture and.
Miscellaneous.
Yeah, furniture and equipment or something like that. Not miscellaneous, maybe furniture and equipment, yeah.
Good, and Jeff, you'll let me know when you can install, is that the plan?
Yeah, not on a Saturday.
No, that'd be great with me.
Do we get overtime on Saturdays?
Yeah.
It's the same overtime you get working after five.
Debbie, go away. I'm already exempted. Man, alright.
Okay, Health Department here, so talk about their budget?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
That is page fifty-seven, fifty-eight, so.
Can I make a comment about like the furniture and stuff, and like apparel? I think it'd be really great if we had like a contract with somebody, so if we needed a new office chair. It's not call around and see how much they are, let's look at Staples, let's look on Amazon, let's whatever, we just know, we call, you know, Debbie at whoever, and we get a chair.
There's someone state contract, aren't there?
We tried to do that, but I'm just saying, if we, if we just knew, because this is who you call, it would save a lot of time, and, um, even like apparel, like shirts, like. We had our, one of our grants allowed us to order some shirts for staff, so we did that, but I know like Public Works goes to somebody else, we went through somebody, you know, other people have ordered through, anyway. The county just had a contract, it's like, well, if you need apparel, you call this person at this company. If we could probably get it cheaper, and then it would save staff time from calling around to get quote, to try to get the cheapest quote for us, anyway.
We'll stop to get with Jessica on that and see how we wanted to do that.
Chairs are so, because I got a new chair for my office, and, you know.
I didn't approve that.
Yeah, I went.
If you go to Staples.
Samco.
If you get the MBE ones, they're like eight hundred dollars. They made us order those when we worked at the state. I'm like, this is ridiculous, you didn't go to Staples and get one for a hundred bucks, you know, stuff. I just think if we just knew who to call, anyway, that was just my two cents.
I mean, that's, do we want to do that then? We can direct Jessica to throw something together. We talked about doing that like with the HVAC, electrician and different stuff plumbers, so we can just make a phone call.
I know there's so many variables on chairs, because I remember when Holly, she was buying some nine hundred dollar chairs, and I emailed her, I said, what the hell's a nine hundred dollar?
We had dual power ashtrays.
Chair look like, well, lifetime. Chair looked like, well, lifetime guarantee, and so she said, we've already had one broke and they replaced it, nine hundred dollars for a chair.
It's too much.
You better do everything.
Agreed. Anyway, that was just a suggestion, so, um, I think when I came and presented, I gave you guys a paper about my budget, um, you know, we did get several new contracts in the last few years with that public health infrastructure grant, the ELC ED, they keep expanding it, and they said they're going to extend it to July twenty twenty-five, but I haven't seen that contract amendment yet, which is frustrating, because you think you have so much time to spend the money, so we're trying to spend it and code our time to things like that, but then if they extended, it's like, well then we might have a whole another year to spend it. The only, um, adjustments I asked for was for our environmental staff, I feel like the rest of the staff we've kind of compared to market, we did that with the nurses, but the environmental staff, um, I did not use, ask for my reserve last year, and they're the ones that haven't really been adjusted to market, I asked for each of them to receive a four thousand dollar raise, and that's still putting them below what the state starts at, but it, it's better, and, um, I would say that, you know, we've, we've lost several this year and had to retrain, and the thing, the other thing, you know, training costs money, and then with those staff, um, we can't bill for their inspections, like for childcare, until they're trained, they have to go on six, six inspections with a state person, so, you know, not only is somebody else having to train them, we can't bill for their inspections, so we're losing revenue there, and we have to have a lot of turnover with those positions.
So, so similar, the schedule I prepared, the requested adjustments, you're asking for, four, right? Increases on four percent COLA, obviously, and then.
Right.
In addition to that, for, your four environmental staff, right?
Right.
Anderson, Gassner.
Lead, Gassner, and then a vacant one, I thought I added four thousand dollars to.
Was that a vacant?
Yeah, that one's vacant now.
Let me see what. I lost, I can't get to my network, I lost my connection.
Yeah, right there. Right, I added four thousand dollars in for those four positions.
Oh, I know why, you, you put three percent COLA.
Oh, because that's before, yeah, that was.
All I did was take the difference between my four and what you requested, that's why I'm showing less.
Final number comes up the same.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would still request for them to be, have it, you know, the four percent COLA and then an additional four thousand dollars.
See, I want to change that.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, you need to have four percent COLA, will you accept that instead of three?
Yes, please.
Way to talk her into it.
I didn't want to force this on you.
Right, I think all of my staff would appreciate a four percent.
All right, same verse, I'm fine putting the adjustments into the merit, and then we went, let's look at that, I know when you came to us, you said the state was at?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, eight or something.
That puts our starting salary at fifty-two.
So much more fun to work.
Right.
For Col County Health.
Well, I mean, an argument for it is that we're constantly replacing them.
Yes, and like I said, while we're training, we can't charge for their inspections, so.
I don't think it's because they don't like the job or the place they're working, it's the money.
Correct.
So, yeah, I definitely want to take a look at it, so.
The one that just left said he could make more money at his side hustle than he can at our job, so, to do the side hustle full time.
State has different, they make employees pay the four percent for retirement, they also make them pay some on their health insurance, so.
And they also get maternity and paternity leave paid, six weeks paid, they don't have to use their sick leave, so.
If I get any more grandkids, I'm going to be a stay-at-home grandpa for the price of daycare.
I know, yeah.
Man, I couldn't believe that.
Some of our staff pay to work, yeah.
I thought a four in that house was crazy, but then, have a couple of kids nowadays, oof.
Right. So, and then the other thing, um, I hate to bring it up, but the brain injury contract, hopefully, we will get an increase in that in July, historically, you know, when the previous auditor was here, she always talked about that contract paying for all of that person, and this year it did not, so. But they did say we're supposed to, they asked the legislature for an increase in that contract, so.
So we're losing it, or we're losing that person?
No, the contract just didn't pay for all of it, the county had to pitch in some general revenue.
Is it a line in our revenue?
It's in the revenue.
Five nine eight six.
Third from the bottom.
Oh, five nine eight oh.
On page fifty-seven. So sixty-six eight is the estimated.
That's what it is.
Revenue, oh, that, okay.
That's it, that's what the contract is, we get in, it's from July to June, our budget's January to December, but it's.
And it covers multiple counties, right?
Right, she serves, yeah, multiple counties.
And we pay that person currently fifty-three nine, maybe tack on four percent COLA.
And then her mileage.
Fifty-six four, well, plus benefits, so her total cost is seventy-seven, just, uh, salary and benefit seventy-seven five alone, so, yeah, so we're about ten thousand.
Plus her mileage. She usually has two to three hundred dollars in mileage every month. And then the other thing, um, if you wanted to talk about the nurse practitioner, the current one we have, um, her contract lasts until April or May, right?
Uh, for collateral practice, we sign in September.
Okay, but her contractor?
Her contractor.
I don't know, anyway, I need to look, but she did ask for an increase for the next year, currently we pay her five hundred dollars a day, no matter how many clients she sees, and she's asking for it to go up to seven hundred and fifty. So, I know we had talked about putting a nurse practitioner in that could almost function as urgent care, and I would request that we have that nurse practitioner also be able to serve those family planning clients, you know, right now we do it twice a month, if we did it, if they, they could make appointments anytime for those services, it would serve our clients better, they wouldn't have to wait, and then we also would discontinue the servant, the contract with the current nurse practitioner, I think we'd have more clients too, because people get tired of waiting, so they try to find somewhere else, or they just don't go to the doctor for that, which is an issue too, so.
So what line item is the current nurse?
We pay her.
Is that professional services?
We pay her, and we pay Dr. Kaywood out of, actually, at this time, we pay Dr. Kaywood out of the ELC grant, but typically we pay Dr. Kaywood out of that.
Okay.
And.
So we're spending about fifteen thousand a year on the current nurse practitioner?
Yeah, twice, no, twelve thousand, she comes twice a month, five hundred dollars a time.
Okay, no.
Sometimes we'll cancel if we only have one person.
What, where's the line, what line am I looking for to see?
On page fifty-eight, uh, toward the top, professional services.
Like I said, other things are paid out of that besides just the nurse practitioner. Dr. Kaywood, typically.
Let's see what we got in there.
This year we pay Dr. Kaywood's fee out of ELC.
You just have the nurse practitioner at ten thousand, Kaywood.
For twenty-three? Oh, that's the new budget, okay, so this year we should pay.
Oh, okay, yeah, so right now in this year's budget, we got nurse practitioner ten thousand, Dr. Kaywood five thousand, total fifteen thousand, that's the budget request for next year.
And that will cover her, the nurse practitioner, if she's seven fifty, a trip?
No, we have to increase it, I guess she just told me that last week when she was there, but Dr. Kaywood's fee this next year can come out of ELC again, I won't have to pay it out of county revenue, I can pay it out of that contract for another year.
Is that?
Five nine one two oh.
I would like to look into seeing maybe if we can have, put a nurse practitioner on our staff, because I, I, just talking to other governmental entities and stuff, I think we can actually, uh, we can keep her busy.
For a hundred and fifty thousand extra money, uh, the general fund, total salary benefits, so.
While I have the ELC contract, I could bill part of her time to that, because she would certainly do COVID testing and consultation, that's one of the things we could do, so while I have some of those contracts, I could bill her or his time to that, but those contracts aren't going to be forever, they keep saying that we're going to get more public health money, but that ELC contract that we have, that they said.
They just took some away from us, you said, for the brain injury.
No, they haven't taken it away, they just haven't increased it in years, so as her salary and, and mileage goes up, we're using all of that contract, it's been sixty-six eight for the last probably eight years.
I thought you said they reduced it.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
But, um, you know, as I have those extra contracts, I can certainly pay for it with that funding, because the rest of us, like, I had hours built in there for the staff to do contact tracing and keep track of cases, we're not doing that anymore, so I have extra personnel money in ELC, I could bring you that budget or send it to you if you'd like to see it, so I could, um, put it towards that position, especially if it's, it's COVID-related, and they would certainly do COVID testing, um.
And do we do that, do we do that COVID testing today?
No, but we would, because the new machines test for flu.
COVID, RSV.
One swab, put in the machine, it tells you what you got, or what you don't got.
And that takes, that takes someone, the, uh, a licensed nurse.
Yes.
Is there anyone in our office can do that now?
I think we could.
We could if we got it, or add it to our standing orders from Dr. Kaywood.
But the problem is, if they come in and they have flu, or it's not RSV, or it's not the other extended prescription, our staff can't, we can't treat, we can't write a prescription, so we could say, oh, this is what you have, good luck to you, we can't do anything about it, with a nurse practitioner, we could, we could give them an antibiotic or Tamiflu, or, you know.
Sadly, most quick cares now are nurse practitioners, on the, on the news last night, they were talking, JCMG has a clinic in Fulton that's staffed by a nurse practitioner.
I think the one, Cape Regent's at Hy-Vee.
Hy-Vee is a, is a nurse practitioner, in my experience last week with nurse practitioners was very good, so.
My thought on a nurse practitioner is, is a nurse practitioner something the public wants us to do, not is something that we, we could, quote, keep them busy, uh, is that a service, that, that, that service that would keep them busy, is that a service the public wants us to provide?
I think that it probably doesn't happen as much as it used to, because they know we don't have anybody there, but I know there's been time where staff, um, clients have been there like for a week, and their child might be sick or have a rash, and, and they would ask us if anybody could see them while they're there, um, I know that going to a regular urgent care takes a long time and it can be expensive, and so they wait, and then they just go to the ED, so, you know, and then, because they can't be turned away, and you don't have to have insurance, and you can be seen, so if we could provide some of those services at the health department at a lower rate, I think the public would like that. I think that we currently don't offer some of the STD or other services for men, and that is a huge need, so men are having issues, um, and they don't be, they don't get seen, or they show up at the ED at ten o'clock at night because they are in pain, um.
Maybe the ED, maybe the local EDs would like to help us with this.
I wasn't looking so much as opening it to public, I mean, if that happens, it happens, I was looking at more of a, trying to help our health insurance and as a benefit to the employees, so, the public part would just be open above, so, I, I think it's worth looking into overall, but I, when we went and looked at the other place, theirs was an employee benefit, and it actually helped them with their health insurance.
Well, and got there, well, you expect to work quicker too.
So, right, so, I just, we had a number in there that we placed for that, it was a hundred and five, or you said a hundred and fifty?
Well, when you add all benefits, you're going to get close to a hundred and fifty.
So, and what else would we need to do that?
And then we, um, Dana, they, it was about twenty-seven thousand with like some supplies, you know, like the machine, you know.
I didn't put anything in.
I think it's something we should, we should look into, and.
That's a major difference between her request and my recommendation, I did not put that in at all, so. I guess, okay, so if you do that, at least the ten thousand dollars will go away that we're currently paying, which will go up some too.
Right, right, she's requesting seven hundred.
Look into, find a budget and do it today, I, I, I don't like the optics of going out there and seeing three elected officials standing in line to see our nurse practitioner, and it could happen.
But if it's keeping our health costs. We give very high, we give a really good health insurance benefit to our, all our employees already, we pay a hundred percent, we pay fifty percent of beneficiaries, so I'm kind of, I mean, I don't have a final say on this, but I'm kind of leaning toward Harry, is this?
So when we pay for an office visit, what do we pay?
This is a little bit of luxury than a necessity.
What do we pay for an office visit?
The employee pays?
No, no, I mean, what does the county, I'm talking about the county, our bottom line.
The employee pays when they go, and then we pay a discounted price because we're in the UMR network.
Right.
So it's very, it depends what kind of doctor.
So every time they have a visit, you take that money instead of having to pay that, that's where our nurse practitioner is being funded from.
I don't think it would ever cover itself.
I would beg to differ.
I just don't know if the employees would actually.
And I think it'd be a nice benefit too, to have a place where you can go and not sit in line for two hours.
Quicker.
It's only eight to five, we don't have weekends, we don't have nights, if you check into urgent cares, that's when they're hit, it's weekends and nights.
I've never gone to an urgent care.
They close at six, I think.
Yeah.
An urgent care, the bill we get from an urgent care is going to be considerably higher.
I just, I don't.
I think it would pay for itself.
Well, I think, I think it's something we need to, to, to work, look at, and, and maybe, you know, put a pencil to it and see.
Again, I don't have a final say, but it needs some study, needs some kind of analysis.
I think it's hard to predict, like, I don't know what other information you want us to look for, because I think it's hard to predict, like I said, we had done a survey a couple of years ago, but I don't think that's valid, there's been so much turnover, and healthcare has changed so much, I mean, you know, you can barely get into a doctor
I agree with that.
Yeah.
They, they direct you to urgent care, how many urgent cares we have in this community? We have a lot, you know, so, I mean, nobody has a problem getting into urgent care.
You just have to wait, I guess, I don't know.
They, they should be able to tell us how many times we pay, that, that should get us a good number.
Yeah.
You know, that could either enforce my argument or shut me the hell up.
I'm like, Jeff, I'd like to look, I'd like to look and see what that cost is.
Because the numbers may not be there to support it, and then we just have to, okay, we looked at it, move on, so, I.
Yeah, so I don't think we have access to that data, you know, we.
We do, right?
I, I.
You're saying we do.
I do, I do.
I think UMR can tell us how many times a county employee went to an urgent care and ran it through the UMR insurance, blah, 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 and that's fine, let's get those stats, uh, even after we get those stats, I'm going to think, look, we have a great insurance coverage here for the employee, and for an employee to go out there to the health department and get in the way of citizens who that's their only choice, I don't like it, and, and I think it would, uh, it's another, it would be a benefit to elected officials as well as employees, and the optics of that is ugly, in my opinion, but I'm. But I'm only watching.
Well, I think get the, let's get that information, cause that, that can shut it down or it can give us some.
It might blow our minds on what.
To move forward. It, it may just shut it down right away, but I, I just think government's one of the most inefficient businesses around, so I don't want to use that to judge anything else. But when a private business has their own practitioner and they do it, there's gotta be something to it. And they have the same kind of insurance we got, partially self-insured.
And I'm, I mean, four hundred employees versus thousands of employees too.
Uh-uh. About the same number.
No, I mean, whether that cost benefit is there or not.
Well, I'm at the company that I was comparing to, has, I think they have about the same number of employees.
And I remember that they would have less people do it too, cause they're a factory. They can't just jump off the line. They had to do it before work or at lunch or after work.
And they, I mean, we've already got a health department, we got room for it, so, I mean, they actually stood up a, an area to do it, so.
Let's check with U M R.
I think it's worth looking into.
I think that's, that's gonna be the.
The numbers may not be there to support it.
That's gonna be the next thing that we need to check on.
So if we decide not to do that, we'll have to increase the nurse practitioner fee.
Effective what date?
I have to look at her contract. I don't remember. I'm pretty sure we signed that in September. Okay, then we would have to do it for a while.
Okay.
Cause I told you, we would have to wait until her contract was up, cause she had already signed it for this year.
And it'll go up about fifteen percent.
But we also won't have Dr. Kaywood's fee this year, cause I'll pay it out of E L C, so we might be fine. Cause that's five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, the fifteen thousand probably cover it.
Right, cause I will pay Dr. Kaywood's fee out of E L C. I've been trying to use the contracts for everything I can. They're paying for all of our cybersecurity right now, which I hope that when I bill D H S N O N, it comes in, it's going on your side to the right end.
Sure.
That's what I was worried about.
I mean, I'm trying to fill out Brian's.
Right. I know, that's what Brian knows. Uh, we've been paying, um, our electronic health record used to come out of Brian's budget. We've been paying for that for the past several years. So trying to, I'm trying to pay for everything I can out of those contracts while we got them. Um, can we also talk about cell phone stipends? I know that we were talking about cell phones versus stipends versus, you know, whatever. I'm a little, yeah, so.
With Brian on that, I mean, I heard this morning that maybe, you know, we, we have different stipends. And if we have a six hundred dollar stipend for somebody, but we can actually give them a phone for five hundred, why are we paying a six hundred stipend?
But then like, so, I'll just put myself out there. My stipend's been six hundred since I started. They gave me a county cell phone. But in order to get the email on the county's cell phone, I have to approve it on my personal phone. Why, in the, and in order to use my laptop at home, I have to prove it on my personal phone.
And you may say the six hundred would cover it, but then there's gonna be upgrades on phones that happen. That's on top of that.
And then there's.
What if the county's gonna eat that cost when there's upgrades on those phones?
And then if they're making it to where you can get to the portal, like if I can get to the portal from my personal phone and approve it on my personal phone, I don't want that county phone, cause I don't want to have to carry two if I don't have to. You know, and then like, same, like, gin and them are the same way. They don't want to carry two if they don't have to. If they can get to the portal from the Safari on their phone and approve it on their phone, cause you should, you're gonna have to V P N to in there too, you know. And then there's some people that they don't, like our M's nurse, she doesn't need a county cell phone to check her email, but she does need to be reached twenty-four seven if we have a vaccine issue. So I don't want to give her a personal, her, uh, county cell phone, but I would like to reimburse her something for being on call twenty-four seven. So I think there, I don't have an answer. I just wanted to say that there's a lot of situations probably to be considered. And if the cell phone stipends are hard to track, well, maybe those positions that are twenty-four seven just need that three hundred or four hundred added to their salary and not calling a cell phone stipend if we are asking them to be on call twenty-four seven, like some of us.
They're taxed on it anyway, right? So it's the same as a salary.
Right, but if it's, you have to track it.
We have no cell phone policy right now. We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can send a copy of it.
But I'd rather not carry two if I don't have to. I'd rather have just one.
Oh, amen to that.
You what?
Said amen to that. Carrying two phones is ridiculous.
I did that for the state as a team.
I'm doing the same thing on this phone as I'm gonna do on that phone.
Well, and then everyone has my personal phone. It's like, and I'm not gonna start trying to give out the other one, you know. And if I have to verify the V P N on my personal phone to get the email on the work one. Anyway, I T.
I T, I T, I T.
Yeah. And we just wanna make it easy for staff and easy for I T, you know, we just.
And she's right, there's different amounts. I've never quite figured that out.
Me neither. Yeah.
There's different amounts and it's different positions and we keep adding positions that need the stipend. So, um, if we come up with an overall county new policy, that's fine.
And right now, all of our stipends, except for Shalins, Shalins I bill to the head injury contract even though it wasn't paid. All of the other stipends at the health department are paid for by the public health emergency response contract. They're not out of the county budget. Cause they require, except I guess the environmental are not, but the other is.
I think we need a, um, cellphone retreat.
Where we. Where we get rid of our cell phones?
Oh, no, no, no. Well, we all get to bring tomatoes and we put Brian at the end of the table.
Oh, no, poor Brian.
Yeah, because, I mean, he's the answer guy on all of this stuff.
Anyway, it's probably a further discussion item, but if, if there is a discussion, the health department needs to be involved, or would like to be involved.
To me, cellphone stipends are kind of an adequate thing. Everybody, back when not everybody had cell phones, I mean, I had a landline for the longest time, finally got rid of it.
Right, right. Mark, I had this argument ten years.
Everybody has cell phones now. What?
Everybody knows what to give out to.
Right, if you're asking them to use it for county business.
Then they should have county cell phones. If they don't want to use their personal cell phone for county business, then they need a county cell phone.
Yeah, yeah.
I argued the same thing ten years ago, Mark, cause everybody's got one.
I see your purpose in cellphone stipends.
When you start applying for a job, do you have a cellphone? Do you agree to let us use it?
Everybody uses their cellphone for everything they have, so. Who's not gonna have cellphone today, so I guess.
But with health, like HIPAA and things like that, do we want that to come into your personal?
I guess, I mean, it depends on the whole V P N and how you get into the system. That's an I T question.
All right, I agree. If you don't want to use your personal cellphone for county business, then I understand that. I do not, and I won't, I mean.
Well, for ten years, I really didn't have a choice.
If I absolutely have to have it, then, then I'll ask for a county cellphone. I get that.
Yeah.
Just to pay a stipend, to me, that's kind of a thing of the past, so.
A lot of corporations still do it. A little private sector still do it. I'm not saying it's not a thing of the past, but yeah.
Well, you should have the same protection getting in anything on your personal phone as you do a phone issued by the county. And mine's not gonna be any different. The only thing that's gonna be different is I have to have another piece of freaking equipment that I gotta carry around.
Well, and if I have to approve it on my personal phone to be able to get into it on the county phone, just.
If somebody doesn't want to use their own phone and they want a county issued one, then I agree, okay. Brian started all of this.
Yeah, yeah. He said we could call him. Let's call him up.
He's gonna be dying soon.
No, he hasn't listened to me enough about this.
I know.
Preferably give him a little bit of a break.
Okay.
Anything else?
Don't have any answer for you.
Oh.
For, just to clarify, for the new nurse practitioner salary.
We're gonna have to.
Do you want to put it in the budget right now, two or three?
The increase or the?
The increase.
No, be a hundred and five thousand plus benefits.
Can we do like a plate holder?
Do you want that in the budget right now? Cause that's the budget request now from the health department, so.
So if we approve it later on, it would have to come out of contingency, right? So I, I just don't think.
So don't put it in there right now?
No, I think, I think we're too, it's too premature.
Okay.
But I think we need to look at it. I think we need to talk to U M R. We need to, we need to look at, it might be that it's just a moot point. It's, it's not, but I think. I, I think it could save us some.
I just want to know what to put in the final budget, approved budget. Do not include it in the final commission approved budget. But I know we all want that.
Yeah.
Don't put it in the final pre-budget yet.
Put it in there, yeah. If we decide to do it, then we can, you know, pull it up.
Come back in a special.
And then Greg did put in his budget like siding and then also some painting repair, so I, I was a little confused by that, cause if we do siding, do we not need the painting repairs or we still need them?
We talked about that a while ago.
Oh, did you? Okay.
He said it was kind of a duplicate, kind of meant the same thing, right? Is that the way you all took it?
But I know that, like, we talked about siding and in that atrium area, you know, removing those windows that go to nowhere, putting siding there.
Yeah.
But then the other windows in the atrium, like, there's one that doesn't even seal. So maybe with the siding, we could also kind of throw those atrium windows in there because we're, we're losing heat and air, cause the windows aren't, aren't good.
Did you have to wonder if there's a cabinet or something in front of?
No, remember, we looked at it when we were in, oh, yeah, that one side, but the other side that is to the hallway, there's actually some of those windows that we were, Greg was in.
Gotcha, okay, so that was the other side.
Right.
Are there, are there areas of the building that would take paint? Cause his, the, it says replace outdoor siding, so there's existing siding. So replace that, but there's also paint exterior. Are there other areas that would need painting that don't have siding?
The poles, yeah, there are.
I think, I thought Greg said it was two different things.
Okay, good. I just wanted to, but I think we do need the siding, so. And like I said, I would argue for windows in that atrium because it's hurting our, our efficiency.
It's pretty though.
Yeah, it is, but they're, they're just old.
Peaceful.
Does that still leak up there in that front corner?
At the front corner of the.
Way on, I guess, would be the west side of the building? Has that been fixed?
No, the storage room. I don't think it's been leaking.
Of course, we haven't had rain in about a year.
Right, right.
So again, we don't know for sure.
Right.
Cause that's what we're talking about.
The break room, they, they fixed the roof, but they haven't fixed the walls yet.
Okay, well, that's on the list, I mean, that we put in for the capital.
Good, yeah, we wanna make sure.
And do you want an outdoor sprinkler system too?
I, the public work staff that have to do the water requested that.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's not my forte, is landscaping. And the renovations are looking really good. You guys have to stop by, we're excited. Ca, I think cabinets are next, they finished the floor. Okay, any other questions?
Any other line? I, I didn't change anything else on the budget, request, name.
Okay.
Unless I missed, no.
So I think our big discrepancy.
I made some errors on others.
Yeah, I think our big discrepancy was the nurse practitioner.
Yeah, okay.
And then the increases for the environmental staff, which you guys added.
I'm not opposed to that, I just.
Yeah.
I just didn't put it in, that's.
Okay. And you guys were okay with those increases for the environmental, public health staff?
I'm gonna throw it into the pool and then we'll have Sheila probably look at them. That's where I was at with it.
Okay.
So, it won't, I don't think it's gonna happen January first. And I don't know how long it'd take to kind of look at that and how long for us to decide.
Well, Sheila, we're giving you a lot of power.
I'm glad we did a lot of the legwork before, just not so long ago.
Okay.
Got an ocean.
Okay.
But you're not gonna come back and say, sorry, this isn't budget time, we're not gonna prove that, you have to wait to budget time, right?
No, we had a merit pool last year too, that, I thought it actually worked out pretty good for special requests.
Yeah.
And, but yeah, this is still budget time when we go through it. That's the answer to it. We'll get a final answer, go through H R.
Okay, well, if you need any of that documentation, again, I probably still have it.
If you would just afford this opportunity, because I did not get any of my old email stuff back, and so I may not be able to.
Okay. Brett came out to fix my printing issue, cause I could not print an email, and when he did that, I got all mine back, all ten years of it. I was like, hallelujah. I'm like, what'd you do? He's like.
If you got the information, Sheila gets it to us, I mean, it could happen, January first.
I will send it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or you can sit in there and hound us like the sheriff does until we make it to sit in.
I haven't said a word.
He is listening.
I haven't said a word.
Hey, what do you want to do next?
Do you need a break?
I'm good for right now, maybe at ten thirty.
Do you need a snack? Can you just go get you some food?
Do I look angry? Where's my Snickers? You are the chef's.
Okay, just wanted then go back to the front and we'll work through.
I feel like we're going backwards now, Mark.
Well, what, what are you guys, I'm talking to you.
Top two. That's a good thing, just work our way to the back of the book, makes sense.
Okay.
I like that.
Well, and the first one is mine.
Oh, X, where's my red pen?
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I asked for additional is because I had some salary saving. Now, I just want to point out that, uh, okay, so I lost my full-time chief deputy back in the summer. Did not replace her, didn't find a qualified candidate until November first, so I went six months without a full-time deputy. So she was working part-time, so I saved salary, some salary money that way. I, to help with the transition, I'm, I put in there, I wanted, I asked for twelve thousand part-time. I can, I mean, I, I can scale that back. I'm willing to ask for less.
How long would that keep her? Cause that's what you said you were.
Uh, been paying around twenty-eight dollars an hour, so let's say.
Thirty in change.
Thirty, yeah, thirty divided by, let's say, let's go down to nine thousand thirty. What would that get you? Three hundred hours? I can live with that.
You mentioned something about some additional audits as well.
Well, she could help with that. That's something I really wanted to.
So why don't we just leave it at twelve thousand?
Okay, okay, I'm just, I'm just.
It's in there, if you don't use it, if you don't use it.
I think it'd be a good idea for your staff to show up at different offices during the year and say, we're here to look at, fill in the blank.
I was hoping to have that in place by now, but with losing my.
Right.
Going through the first year, getting through a budget process and a lot of process, I thought I was at the point where we just, we'd start maybe doing some audits and then I lost my full-time deputy and we're down. And of course, the two months of.
You have the part-time in there, you're able to keep her to do the transition and to try to work on getting some of these surprise audits.
Sometimes surprise, I don't know, at least audits, I don't know, maybe surprise, but it's, surprise audits aren't always the best thing either.
Maybe it's wrong word for it.
Do some, do some audits, yeah, yeah. That's, I'm the county auditor, so.
And we can, we can.
They'll get in some.
Let a lot of departments, elected officials know that we will be doing some audits, you know, at, at various times, so there, it's not necessarily a surprise, but.
Get the finance office in there.
Yeah, they'd be top of my list.
I would, I would just leave it at twelve thousand.
You're okay, okay.
If you don't, if you don't use it, if you don't use it.
Okay.
I'd say I agree.
Cause I could really use her during the, at least early in the year, help train the, my new full-time with, uh, cause we're gonna be, still be busy getting ready for the audit.
We usually try to do that anyway, try to have some overlap, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, next.
All right, thank you.
Better stop while you're ahead, Mark.
Yeah.
They call my turn.
Thank you. Thought that was gonna be a harder sell.
Pardon?
Thought that was gonna be a harder sell.
It was, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Sheriff wore us down this morning.
Can I do some of that?
Uh, nah, maybe I can skip Larry. I think he might want to be here if anybody wants to check with.
I think the only thing he had on there that I had note about was the merit increases.
Well, that's true.
Did you have any other notes for him?
I do not. I mean, I guess maybe he doesn't, we could ask him later if he wanted to come in to sell it again, but yeah, I think he tried to sell it at his initial budget meeting. He's, he's just asking for.
Party five hundred.
He's asking for fifteen hundred additional in merit for all each of his three full-time employees, so.
I, yeah, I mean, I'm fine putting it into that pool. We may have to go over this in a separate meeting to go over some of these, cause I don't think that.
Fifteen hundred here, seven hundred fifty here.
Yeah. So everybody, everybody's asking for a little different. That's, that's the, that's the thing, yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah. But yeah, everything else in collector, nothing else. Nothing different, yeah.
I just, it's, try to do what's good for, one office is good for the other and try to have some kind of parity, but everything's not always equal, so you just try to be fair with it. I don't know.
Well, I can check with Larry at noon if he wants to come in and talk about it some more, but, uh, he, he asked, I think you, Harry, or me both. Didn't, didn't Larry ask you any thought, if we knew what time, we were gonna talk about his budget or?
He said he'd like, I thought he said he'd like to be here.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, I know he's, I don't know if he's, I don't know if he's still two people short with illness, but. Okay, all right. Treasure, there's. Treasure, there's, there's nothing different there, he didn't, he didn't ask for any merit, so his, his recommended budget is, requested budget is same as my recommended, so. I mean, he is up for election, so the only thing new is his bonding, and he's got the large bond, his bond costs more than most everybody else, 3,000, more to put in budget for, for his bond, but.
Okay.
And just because people didn't ask for that merit doesn't mean they all want to be in line.
Right, right, he just didn't ask, he didn't ask for any merit, so.
Right.
Anything you want to discuss about treasure budget?
Okay.
Okay, alright. Uh, clerk, we already talked about. I mean, he's got his election services, that's just.
I don't think we talked about his one, though, that's all.
Yeah, the other thing on page.
Larry's on his way out.
Oh, okay.
This one ever, yeah.
So on page 33 with the clerk, we put the NID budget, but again, that's just kind of a, there's really no discretion there, you got the. The bonds to pay, yeah, the bond payment and the interest payment, yeah, so. Next one will be your budget, unless you want to, you want to take a quick break? If Larry gets to.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Stand and stretch.
Yes, gotta do the hokey pokey. Turn yourself around.
I might as well go to the bathroom again. Yeah. Oh, he's here already.
Aren't you kind, sir?
Fine, and you? How was your trip yesterday?
Long? Wasn't, wasn't as long as probably, it wasn't that bad.
I learned that if you want to travel to Joplin and back in the same day, you go with a law enforcement person who has.
Sirens.
Sirens, lights.
Do you hear what I'm saying, Alex? I never see the post lane.
That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Because the car is not a toy.
Got that straight out of your training manual, right? This car is not a toy. But it makes really neat sounds.
Still lining up to pay tax, pay their taxes?
Yeah. At least we got Grudgeon back today, we only had, only had two people yesterday.
I knew you were down too.
And a new part-timer starting today, so.
Are y'all gonna stick around here for lunch?
Are you buying?
Yeah, I was going to.
I would like to leave, I kind of need to leave for at least a half hour, so.
Well, I'll get some pizza or subs or something if we're gonna stick around here, I don't have to leave.
I'm flexible.
I'd like to leave for a little bit.
I do have something I'd like to say I'll go to during lunch hour.
I mean, you can still eat if I get something.
Okay. I, I'd like, I need to physically leave for a little bit.
What time you leaving, when you want to get back?
Makes me no difference.
I'm trying to coordinate with somebody who's swinging through town.
I have no diff, you decide then.
But I'm not sure when. No, actually.
Because I can leave anytime, I just need to.
He won't be here until about 2:00.
Oh, okay, okay. I just need to leave for a bit, come back, it doesn't matter when, anytime around noonish, 11:30-ish, 12:30-ish, I just, I just need to get out for a little bit, yeah.
How's Sam today?
Nothing to talk about, I see.
Oh, no, not bad.
Well, considering you're in the hospital longer than you thought.
Can I help you, sir?
Yeah, I went to the doctor, yes.
And the fact that you're physically here today is, I think, very great.
I'm doing very well, yeah. Now by Saturday.
Not knowing your whole.
By Saturday, I might just be.
Situation, but yeah, just the fact that you're here after being hospitalized.
Tell me about it.
That's good, it sounds real good, it looks real good.
Yeah, he was surprised I came back to work, I said, well, I'm only working like Monday, probably only like three hours.
We'll get Jeff back in here, we'll get you back to work. This is your busy time, this is your busy time.
Oh, I think that went pretty well.
Yeah, I figured there would anyway, I wanted to really zoom this, nothing like this. You need to be here.
It's great here, yeah.
Need to be here, then you can look at Larry and you go.
No. Could tell it to him in his face, no.
I should have brought my button out.
Take care of Larry for us.
No, didn't you rough him out?
He gave me, he hit the no already, I said I should have brought my button out.
You got the yes button?
You know we're still being recorded, so be careful. The recording's not going off, right?
No, we're still on, we're still on the air. So how are numbers going, Larry, are you, are we ahead or about?
We're, well, we were ahead at the end of November, mainly because CoreLogic paid theirs in November, which they normally don't pay till December 10th, so that was 14 million dollars, so.
Woo.
Our, our November was, is about 25 million, which is typically, it's probably in the 10 or 12 million area.
Yeah, I keep saying whenever I'm leaving here, there's always people, and some of them are really still cheerful after they've paid you.
You ready to?
Yeah, I was just standing, standing, stretching, I'm good till we got going again. Did you, do you have a set time that you're trying to do your meetup?
Uh, it won't work, so.
I don't care, I just need to leave for about a half hour.
I wouldn't mind breaking away just for like about 20 minutes at 2:00.
See how things go, hopefully it'll be done.
Yeah.
This will get Pranger, I know that's when Toby was planning on coming for Pranger at 2:00, because I thought she, thought she'd get Judge Beadham done with it, he would be his court.
See, I'm like, we're done. Anyway. All orders and pizza live here around 11:30 or noon, we'll take a little break, if you need to leave, you can leave.
I do.
And you can, you're more than welcome to have some of it, so.
Okay, alright.
Oh, are your ears ringing?
Dude, are we still only on television?
We are.
Yes, it's live.
Uh, I need to change your iPad.
Okay, yeah, the code should be on.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Just remove that, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Ooh, so my iPad needs that.
Now, when you put that, when you switch it over to Outlook, the stuff that's on Exchange. There's, I mean.
I'm fine.
Right now, I got. Yeah, it's on my desk anyway, if you want to look at it, the code's.
Now we're going to have porn here, where'd everybody go?
Well, Larry came up and we just.
Just say yes, and I'll get my, back to my office.
Drinking lukewarm soft water.
Is that money coming downstairs, Larry?
I think it's coming pretty good. Then, we've had lines, but nothing horrible, not like we had years ago where they used to fill the hallway.
Well, that'll happen, that'll happen last week or last day.
It really hasn't been that bad.
It has COVID. Oh, really?
More people mailing their payments in, or dropping them in the drop box, or paying online. But we really, normally the second last day of the year is the busiest day. Last day of the year, typically by 1:00, we're dead.
So it's, it's on a holiday or on a Sunday.
Oh, yeah, are you, are you gonna be open on Saturday?
Well, you cut it off on Friday.
We cut it off on Friday. When it ended on Friday.
Or ended on Saturday.
We stayed open one year when Friday was the holiday. We, we stayed open that day, because it was the last day or second last day or something. We've opened on Saturday before in, in years past, and just we hardly get anything at all.
Really?
And we've tried to stay and open later, you know, till like 5:30, 4:00, then that pretty much dead also.
How many pay online now, do you have, like a percentage, or do you know?
I don't know, it's up to like 5 million in dollars.
I would do mine online if I wasn't up here all the time, it's just as easy for me as to drop it off, but it's, it's so convenient and easy. I do Miller County, Camden County, both of them online, and there is a small fee associated, but it's so minimal, so easy to sit at home.
What, it's about 2%, 2.5%?
2.25.
2.25.
It's whatever that credit card fee is, right?
Probably one of the lowest there is.
Now, cover's 3.5, convenient to be able to.
Okay.
Alright, page 26, collector's budget.
Why are we going backwards? Just teasing.
Because it's the collector.
Yeah, we thought we approved yours already, too late.
No, sorry. I'll just take a couple minutes of your time, again, my, my primary concern is a request for raises this year, that you give that very serious consideration. I would even be willing to do an MOU for that, I know you all have tried to avoid that since years ago, but that's, it's really not a large amount of money, so if that would help influence your decision, I'm, like I said, I'd easily sign an MOU for that amount. My only other areas of concern are gonna be printing, postage, and bank charges. Those costs have gone up significantly this year, for one player, our bank, our bank contract renewed with Central Bank, and it had a cost of living increase in that. Postage, as you know, we're aware, it keeps rising, and so does printing. Perforated paper, we used to buy for $50 a case, is now $100 a case. So I think we're probably gonna exceed those budgets this year, and I'm going to cover that excess out of my tax maintenance fund, but next year, we may need to adjust when we finally get the final numbers on this year. May have an early request to adjust those amounts. And by statute, you're, you're required to pay for the postage and the printing of tax bills and stuff.
So it cost approximately 27,000 to mail out our statements?
It did this year. I mean, that was just the postage cost.
Yeah.
Hopefully that will be down next year, we're gonna change how we do our sorting and pairing. We had an issue last year, we had a lot of complaints because we, we just went by an address match for personal property and real estate, and we had a lot of parents that got their children's bills, and they were very unhappy about that, even though they live in the same house, it turned out to be a pretty big issue, we got lots of calls on that. So we backed off of this year to exact name pairing, and that drove the, the cost of postage way up. We're gonna try to find a middle ground there, because part of the problem is, when you're doing exact name pairing, people use their abbreviated name on their personal property, not their proper name, and on real estate, on a deed that's recorded, if the guy's name is William, it's gonna say William, but on his personal property, it'll say Bill, and that didn't match in our system this year, so that made the significant difference.
Yeah, I got my personal and real estate two different males.
I did too, yeah.
So hopefully we're gonna remedy that. We just ended up in a time crunch this year because we renewed our contract with Central Bank late in September, and we didn't have a lot of time to work through all those issues. So those are my only concerns, that, that we may need to address the banking charges, postage, and printing, as soon as we get final numbers in, so.
And I got your, those are your requested salary adjustments, right?
Yes, sir.
200 a piece for your three full-time.
Yes.
Alright.
And as I said earlier, we haven't done that, and I haven't made a request for salary increases, I've always just gone with the COLA for as long as I can remember, and I also, I'm not realistic about it, I realize that all of the county employees probably deserve a raise, especially since y'all cowed out to the EMS and sheriff and.
Don't think he heard that.
He heard it, he heard it, he'll get even with me, I know that.
I would just recommend you don't speak on the way home.
You know it's a recorder, right?
Yeah.
Okay, didn't want you to know that.
What'd you say, full cavity search?
Right now, the, I think the commission is leaning toward putting those requests, putting something in a pool, as far as the, the merit or additional above the 4%, and then with HR's help, maybe, yeah, anyway, that's, or if you want to explain that all differently, clarify that, yeah, that's what you're leaning toward, right?
I think we put it in a bucket, and then you decide, maybe with Sheila's help, how to, how to reach in the bucket and where to put it, so. At the end of the day, I, I'm gonna support putting 4,500 dollars in a bucket for the collector to decide, for the most part, but I won't say veto authority, but in conjunction with visiting with HR, if that's the right thing to do, so.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, it's, it's kind of simple with me, I only have three employees, and they all three work extremely hard. Because a lot of counties have, I always have more staff than we have, so, keep me busy, and they keep me out of trouble, so it's worth a great deal.
Mark.
You got good employees, you really do.
Mark, your number for part-time is 30,010, is there a reason there's a 10 in there?
Nope, nope.
Okay, should be 30.
I was putting numbers over.
You were banging them away, right? Okay.
Living, I was under time crunch, so yeah, okay. Yeah, well, I gotta catch 10, so, I don't know where I came up with that.
That's an unusual typo, yeah. I'll remember that next time you come down with a recommendation.
10 dollars you didn't know you had.
I can get by without the 10. So thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Alright.
Is it commission?
I want to thank the sheriff for the wonderful service he provides to the community.
Don't it speak louder than words, Larry. All of us forgot him this morning, what the heck?
I'll just speak on the commission's budget, I would like you guys to consider putting the current budget plus the 4% back in the budget for next year. It's up to you.
The current, okay, what you got for, or?
The current budget at the beginning of this year.
Oh, okay. The 616,000? Add 4% to that, okay. What, what page are we on? There's no, there's no merit or requested adjustments on any of your people.
Give me a page number.
Okay, well, here's, here's what. Okay, well, here's, here's what, if you wanna just kinda quickly look, oh, why are we, oh, I know why your total, to start with this so low, cause I, there's one left, yeah, cause you had to change. So, but, but anyway, there was, if you just wanna look at what happened, there was four thousand given out in a mid-year adjustment total. So your current salaries are now at six oh nine, eight fifty-three. Uh, the budget for the year was six sixteen, seven ninety-five. So, so current salaries are less than budget because of some turnover.
And then, of course, if you guys come back later and you're gonna decide on the department heads, you need to think about that because you guys will have control of what you do with your department heads. You know, so again, you can address that later in the year too, if you want.
So if we, if we followed our, our own lead that we've been going through today, the, well, let me see. You would compute a salary pool, is that true, for?
Yes, you could use that.
Perfect.
Depending on how you come up with that cool balance.
Well, the, the, you, you, you're looking for six thirty-five, four forty-eight.
Total?
Yeah.
Well, I know I was looking at what the current budget is plus four.
Well, that's.
I mean, the current budget at the beginning of this year.
The current budget, not the current salary, but the current budget.
Yes.
So you were looking at six sixteen, seven ninety-five times a hundred and four percent?
Four percent, yes. Four percent on top of the budget.
Six forty-one, six fifty-four, is what I got.
What'd you get, six?
Six forty-one, six fifty-four. So that would be about six thousand dollars higher than what the current budget is.
Six fifty.
That's what was left in this year's budget too.
I think I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's fine. You know, there's, there's departments like me, well, treasurer only has one employee, but you know, there's some other small departments didn't ask for any adjustments. So I would hope, if you're doing that for all other departments, that you would also look at my office, treasurer's office, whatever, also, so.
Okay, that's all, that's all in that budget unless you guys can think of any other training or anything else you want to go to the next year other than what we, what you normally go to.
I think we're good.
We did have to do some pretty good transfers in office supplies. We'll see how that works out again. Keep in mind, purchasing comes out of there, HR comes out of there, you guys come out of there. So we all come out of there.
Out of your one twenty-two budget.
Yeah. And then like Chris said, you know, papers and stuff, right? So we went through a paper for instance for a while. It's probably whatever, fourth quarter we didn't make.
Page thirty-five now. Good on?
Very good.
Want to tackle ARPA now? Or that's the next page, or we can, we can go back to it if you wanna.
ARPA is a lot of whatever's left over from the original approval that the bank have already done. So, and how we end up at the year. Bills that we're paying, paying a big one. Well, we just got the check ready.
I mean, you're not changing any, okay, kinda, kinda pull up on ARPA. Do you just wanna go over ARPA?
Yeah, let's do it. Get it out of the way.
Let's get through it, so might as well.
Give me a page.
It's thirty-six.
Thirty-six. It, it, that's a little harder to follow. I think, I think it's easier to kinda go off your Debbie's schedule, cause I mean, the, the only project, there's only one project so far that's dropped off, right?
That was the St. Thomas?
St. Thomas, yeah. So my question, that was a small amount, but it, it be reallocated that back to, oh, you did allocate, that, that's gone to another, another project.
Fifteen million total.
Okay.
I mean, whether you guys will eventually.
What do we need to do with this today? I mean, it kinda is what it is.
Well, yeah, it is what it is. I mean, we've got a total allocated ride of fourteen nine oh nine, two hundred eighty-four? Is that, is that the right amount?
Yeah, it's, it wasn't quite the fifteen though.
Okay, all right.
I did make a notation. We've got like four hundred thousand in interest on ARPA money. Where, so where are we putting?
It would actually be.
It's going in here, but we're not, we have not allocated.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that number is actually.
Isn't it? I mean, did?
It's higher than that. It's by the end of the year.
Not ARPA money.
That's correct. Back when we had COVID or CARES money, any interest earned on CARES had to be treated like CARES. However, interest earned on ARPA does not have to be treated like ARPA.
So what's it, what's it gonna be now?
Over the three years, at the end of this year, the almost three, well, I can't remember when the first payment came in, but since the interest rate's been really high this year, we, we've got a five million dollar treasury gonna mature in a few days on that. We're, uh, we will accumulate about six hundred and fifty thousand in interest by the end of this year over the two and a half, three years, whatever that money's been.
That's by the end of this year.
By the end of this year, yes, six hundred and fifty thousand.
So we're rolling some of that into another T-bill, Tino?
We'll continue to put that in treasuries until you spend it, yeah.
Okay.
So that's the one.
Yeah.
So, and again, I've talked to four of us. We continue to talk to them all the time, but we are going to seriously look at this after the first quarter of next year and to make sure our projects are in line to having this money encumbered by the end of twenty-four. So, and if there is some entities or awards that can't get that done, you guys might consider a backup plan for some of this money being spent somewhere else, if that's your choice.
So do we need to contact these or are we, are we in communication with them and so they know? Okay.
Yeah.
So is this a good, this is the Forbes line? Is that a good, is that up to date? We've spent two hundred and thirty-eight thousand on that contract out of, I mean, six eleven, which we never expected to fully get to six eleven.
Right.
So.
We do have to get it by the end of twenty-six, so, so potentially.
But, but the monthly, do we get monthly billings?
Yes.
They, they've trickled down somewhat, haven't they?
It's about that.
This line.
So a backup plan, I mean, we've got six and some odd million for the juvenile center. So a backup plan, anything that doesn't get used somewhere, that comes back or whatever could go into that because all the, everything's showing that that's gonna be more.
Right.
So it's.
Yep. I just want you to be aware for some.
Twenty-four and twenty-six are the magic dates, right? Twenty-four, twenty-six. Encumbered twenty-four, spent twenty-six.
Now, we, we should close tomorrow on the real estate.
When I gave Jill.
Yes.
So we're gonna burn off four hundred thousand and change?
Pay that off, it's fine, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So right now, juvenile, the amount allocated is a little less than five million, right?
As we put aside the HVAC.
Yeah, we took the HVAC.
We took something else out of there, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Just so it expanded sooner.
Yeah, so that way we know it's taken care of.
It's on paper, it's about five million right now that left out, left for, for juvenile.
Do we have anything else like the HVAC coming up that we'd be able to do that in case we run into some timelines or something?
Well, the biggest was that million dollars from jail, but then you still gotta figure in holding cells and.
Yeah, but we're, we're not ready to encumber that yet.
You're not, you're not saying that, are you? I was just looking at a more immediate project that's right on the horizon.
Are we doing something to the HVAC or the air, air over at across the street?
Adams.
Yeah, I mean, it's forty.
But you could do it, I mean.
We could do it. We could chew away with this so that we have less at risk of not meeting the twenty-four encumbrance, right?
There's still some parameters that would have to fall under, you know, how many people are we serving there? How, you know, there's, there's no.
Well, yeah, but we, did we do that for the five fifty on this building? Did we?
We're doing it. We have to have a statement of compliance.
Okay.
A lot harder to justify than Adams, because there's just a couple of people over there.
I mean, I could ask them to look at.
I've been trading voicemails and phone calls with Center Town.
Yeah, that is another one that's a concern. It's not a big amount. They're in that five million one.
Which one is that?
It's the very end. You're right, you're right.
Oh, around there, yeah.
So they're only fifty?
Village of Centtown Wastewater, is that the one?
Yeah, we don't have as much, if you wanna say it, flexibility in the five million that you did in the ten million. So that five million has to really be especially, you know, followed by the ARPA rules, if you wanna say it that way.
Okay.
So, and my other one of the concern was Public Works and the one point, basically one million on theirs. We have two architects encumbered and we're paying on those out of here, but we gotta get those projects going and encumbered by the end of next year. And Eric doesn't seem to think that will be a problem, so.
All right. I think we're doing a resource, uh, resource study on one of them to look for, we've been asked to do that by the Osage Nation.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So that's just an update on it. And I mean, I can get you the ones that we've closed, the ones that are supposed to be enclosed, but just so you guys are aware that we just, these people have to have those encumbered by the end of twenty-four. Federal government has not changed their position on that at this point. But they are, they're already starting to kinda chirp about pullbacks. Yep. That is pulling back if the entities that they gave the money to have not encumbered that.
Right.
The way Forbes talks, there's a lot of entities out there that haven't even started this process.
Boone County and Airtombia, I guess, they've gotten, they just now awarded ARPA funds and I'm like, that, that's.
All right. But yeah, all I gotta do is update those, all those numbers at the end of the year and they're all, the budget is just, I mean, I put in the best numbers I had when I completed this, but it's, you know, we get all, rest of the bills paid by the end of the year. I'll adjust those to what's left in each one of those projects.
If anyone wants to talk about that interest, we can talk about that too.
Oh, something that, okay, right now, let me ask this, right now, the Ringer Center amount is in just the ARPA Recovery Fund budget, the general budget. Are you at a point where you wanna, you wanna designate that? Do you wanna put that in as a project in the budget for next year? I mean, it's just kind of a technicality. It's gonna be budgeted either way, but.
Well, we bought, we're buying the land, so I mean, it's, it's, we're getting closer to having.
So you're really officially designated it?
To having a physical project, so.
Yeah, I did make it out of the.
Okay.
Yeah.
So move that out of the general budget down to a project.
Yeah, I just transferred over just the amount that checked out. I didn't transfer in the rest of it, but I can.
Yeah, we're moving ahead, so.
Okay, all right. Okay. Oh, and we spent that whole hundred thousand that?
Yes.
We got that extra, tri, something tribal related, yeah. But that's, that's, you know, that's, that's done.
We'll just have to do the reporting come March of next year.
Yeah, all right.
So the only, are we gonna break?
No, no.
No.
Okay.
We can skip to one conversation with GIS if you're ready.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think it's something from Melissa. She shared this just in here as the renewal call.
Yeah, I think we got that. I think we got the right numbers in there. Pretty sure. I, I can check.
There's the total.
Yeah, I think I got that, but thank you.
What's GIS on?
Uh, page forty-two. Pull that up, make sure I got the right numbers in there. Again, oh, well, you know, there's only one salary, but for her, she didn't ask for any additional, so she's just at the four percent quota requested, so.
She's a department head, so she's not your old sparsey, so.
So it's basically the website increase is gonna be, uh?
I think that's an equipment service contract.
Oh, no, I do need to increase that, don't I? Yeah, okay, we'll reset. I thought we had the updated number, but we don't.
I'm gonna do all of it, so.
Okay. All right, okay. So our budget will go up about a thousand, twelve hundred dollars, cause the increase in the, uh, Esri maintenance agreement, is that her main?
That's the battery.
That's the GI system maintenance agreement, went up twelve hundred, so we'll have to.
She mentioned that.
Yeah. So equipment service contract there, it, it's twelve one eighty-nine. It'll have to go up to about thirteen four, something like that.
Got any questions?
Questions on that? Did you ask? No?
Nope.
On twenty-seven is next, but.
Do you wanna go over that? That's a big one. Skip it, or?
This is what we used to tie the whole general fund to the pass, so.
You're talking general pass.
And we can go through it, well, show through it?
Yes, this quarter's all eleven, so let's get as much as we can this morning.
All right. So that's where all your big tax revenues are budgeted. Property tax, the sixty percent rollback, or that EMS sales tax, the sixty percent of that, that comes from general fund. Local use tax is in there. Uh, I think I figured, at least on sales taxes, I was going with about a two percent increase on, on the sales taxes. I might've, I might've done local use a little higher. No, no, I went ahead and did two percent of local use, although I think, I think that's been going up more than the sales tax, just because of all the online.
Right.
The increase in on, online sales. So we might see a higher increase in the local use tax and what I budgeted. Then, of course, we got the marijuana sales tax, put it in as two hundred thousand. The first payment we got was twenty thousand. We, we did get our first payment on that for in, early this month, just about a week ago. So it's, I guess it comes in similar to sales tax. It's about a two-month lag, so that's probably, that's, should be what they collected in October.
Which was the initial month.
Yeah.
That might've been a gangbuster month. We don't know.
Possible, yeah. But I think we're gonna, we, we're gonna go with the conserv, we're, we don't really wanna spend that money because of, there's pending litigation, you know, but that money is starting to come in.
Okay.
Uh, the prepaid wireless fee down there and the license permits and fees, that's, that money's just been accumulating. I think we're at, uh, okay. I did a recalculation on that. Go, go to page forty-five. Under contractual services, the nine-one-one system, that's the prepaid wireless fee revenue. We haven't spent any of it in the three or four years that we've been accumulating. I, I looked at, re-looked at the numbers. I was off again. I'm gonna have to reduce that down to about, about a hundred and ten thousand. Cause I went back and recalculated all the revenues that came in.
So seven hundred and twenty-five is a hundred and ten.
About a hundred and ten, yeah, so.
Well, when we had the chiefs in here the other day?
Yes. They're looking to spend that on that.
Nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one.
Dedicated nine-one-one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
At least the study, about fifty, you're thinking right now, maybe fifty thousand. We reached out to them. They haven't come back to us yet on a contractor of that, are they not? Yeah. All right, all right. I mean, we'll budget the whole amount, whatever's available, but.
Whatever carried for.
Yeah, it's a carry for, so, okay.
There's a big one there that I should have caught before, on the expense line, insurance.
Oh, okay, where is that?
End page, third one down, materials and supplies.
Oh, my gosh, how did?
Are you on page 45?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, oh, we're not going to have to pay.
How did that get missed? Didn't get in budget request or?
It got in my request, or, oh, no, projection.
We missed it on both, both sides, okay. Is that the, is that?
That's what's.
The liability insurance, but that's not all of it, right? You allocate it out to the departments.
I allocated out, this amount needs to go in there.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, okay. How much?
Probably 235, I'd say.
Is this, looking back at the schedule that we just picked up last week?
That we just did yesterday, or Tuesday meeting.
Okay, 235?
I would have to go, I haven't split it out yet.
Oh, okay.
So that's what we talked about earlier, but it's like the sheriff was included, but that amount probably have to go.
Oh, yeah. Did you hear that sheriff? Your liability insurance might have to go up based on new numbers, so, okay.
So, but.
Will you have those, will you have that breakdown?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay.
Next week or, oh, oh, all right, okay, all right.
I just got to allocate it through all the vehicles and through all the property, by the value of.
And then back to page 44, I think I told you upfront, at budget hearings, I missed the, I missed the revenue, the admin fees coming in.
Yes, I.
Missed that number. That's about 680,000.
Okay.
It's budgeted coming out of all the funds, I just forgot.
Didn't bring it over here.
If incoming, yeah, so.
Oh, transfer in.
Yeah.
We'll need it to offset the insurance.
Yeah. Uh, now, the next transfer in, that's one that's, I think, going to be negotiable, maybe tomorrow morning when I talk to Chief Hoy. That's the $60,000 rent, for EMS rent. It's in the budget, I put it, I kept it in the budget. I know there's discussion how you might want to take it out, so. We'll wait until tomorrow to discuss that when.
You and he's here?
Chief Hoy's supposed to come in first thing, 8:00.
I think, I think probably.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The workers' comp is just the best guess, because we will get a, a visit by the workers' comp auditors during the year.
Well, there's an expense side and a revenue side to that, so.
Yeah, I, we pay it all out of here, and then we bill back to the departments that come back into the revenue. But also after the audit then, I only bill the departments based after the audit, but this is what they expect us to pay. But there is a revenue side too. We do get a refund, I don't know if we will this year because rates have went up so much that I didn't anticipate that as far as the estimate of payroll. So we may not get much back this year.
But, but that, that cost side of it is, we have different rates for different areas, right?
Based on the total salaries, yes.
And, and the mod that they're in?
Yes.
I mean, EMS and sheriff are expensive.
Yes.
Very expensive.
They're very expensive, but the rate is always considered. I never, I, I share the mod across.
He woke up and heard that.
Yeah.
We're worth it.
We, we share the mod right now, it didn't seem, because our mod is reasonable at 83, I think it is, yeah. It seemed necessary to pinpoint that to just those departments, so we'll see after the audit.
So, so on the top of page 45, that 346, that's, that's what you expect, the full workers' comp payment, right? For the whole county.
I'm very close, yeah.
And then on the other, then on the revenue side, that's what you bill to the other departments?
And when I say that, I mean just to the funds.
Okay, you're right, to the funds, yeah.
Both of those, the refund and billing.
Okay, okay. Plus any refund, yeah, so, right now, you think your net cost will be 100,000? Well, oh, no, just to this fund, yeah, yeah.
Because I have to charge out.
It's actually more than that, yeah.
The people in this department, in this fund, in GR fund. These things are small. But they usually are cheaper rating ones.
The Olson account that is off the books, thank you, Sam.
Yes, yes, yes.
So this is very minor, but the miscellaneous revenue side.
A lot of it is.
Some refunds come in sometimes. If it's a refund of an overpayment of expense, a lot of times I'll create a journal entry to get it off of both sides, but some, some miscellaneous stuff just comes in that just stays in, just has to stay in there.
We don't really budget for it.
Okay.
Budgeting for it, so. We budget a little bit on the expense side.
But the, you want me to pull, you got, you want to see specifically area, I can pull up, but.
No, 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 that's so minor.
The expense side, we, I don't know why, we've always kept that hazardous waste agreement in there in miscellaneous, because it was a contract at one time with the city, but now we just ended up paying it. So, I mean, I guess we could, but the deal in line item we had was a grant line item, so that's why we didn't want to use it, because it was a 59 or 58, so we just kind of stuck it in there.
We've got the opioid money in here. Do you, have you been keeping, I think I sent you an email, you got a spreadsheet on that, okay, yeah.
I mean, we just paid a couple more bills, so it's not quite up to date yet.
Yeah, so we got a total in, if I'm, if my numbers are right, in 2022, we got 75, yeah, okay, the numbers are right there, 75,000. This year, we got.
31.
We must have got another payment in. We got a total of 31,000 in this year.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm showing we got 106,000 total in. And then we've, we've, we haven't spent it all, but we've encumbered about, what, 46,000 EMS and another.
20,000 for.
20,000 for Pringer.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you.
But this money will continue to come in over how many years? Gosh.
I, I think there's different, different levels of it. Some last few years, some last few years more than that, I think.
30, 15, 30 years?
15 and 30, 30 and 15.
So about at this point, there's about 40,000 that has not been allocated to somewhere of the total that you've received so far.
Rather have more money coming in than going out, so.
Say we have to spend it certain ways.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I mean, I'll just point it out, on the expense side, capital outlay, we've had that $5 million placeholder for the last three years, three years or so. Haven't spent any of it, so it's in there now.
Okay.
That could be your Pringer Center money.
And that's what I'm looking at. Okay.
You've done no capital out of the general fund for the last three, yeah.
It brought everything to a screeching halt, and we really haven't, we've been nickel and dimeing a little bit here and there, but yeah, this.
And in addition to that, I expect to carry forward, well, we expect to carry forward a total of about 20 million in the general fund, so. To me, that's money you can consider using for your capital needs.
Right.
That would be available for that, so.
Just need to be very cautious.
Well, no, I'm not saying we should spend it all in one year, I'm just saying that's, that's what's.
But to spend it on one-time expenses is really what you should do, isn't it? Which capital?
All right, I guess it didn't take that long, that might be a little more.
Health insurance is the next one, I mean, there's really.
Any, any other, anything on?
I'm good.
Seven accounts, okay. Do you want the 5 million, just? Want that still as a?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, because I think.
I think you're going to blow through that with the, yeah. That could be your Pringer, that could be your Pringer.
That's all going to go.
That could be installed in there.
It's going to go, yeah, it's going to go away.
Keep it in there.
Yes.
Okay, health insurance. Page 46.
We did increase the premiums this year, so you'll see that that's why there's a slight increase in health insurance, and then also medical is anybody that goes over 85, so it breaks down, so.
But look at what we got at both. We got over $1 million this year. We got 1.1 million dollars in on that, that's the.
Over the limit?
Over the limit coverage, yeah, so.
We have several, so.
Yeah.
And which is?
Because I knew we were going to be, we knew we had a higher coming in claims, but most of that was offset by this, by this 1.1 million.
I'm going to be healthy in 2024, it's just turning.
So we got a very good renewal from Sun Life on that stop loss, because we paid them as much as they paid out, so, so it was well worth it. I mean, I can't imagine, we should never have this without the stop loss. But where we said that stop loss is OT.
I mean, I agree, it was probably time for an increase, because there hadn't been any increase in our rates for, what, through six years, okay. But my point is, we ended up this year better than I thought with all that stop loss money coming in, probably the 1.1 million, so.
So we did go from a 3.2 carryover to probably a 2.7?
It's, it's going down, yeah, it's going to go down. But our claim expense is, if you look at the insurance, material supplies, so 2022 is almost 4 million. Well, we're looking at, yeah, it's not going to be that much higher, I think.
Not sure, well, I think.
We might, that might, these numbers might be a little old, because I, let me see where we're at. Let's see where we're at with one more month to go. We're at.
4.4.
Yeah, we're just right at 4 million with one more month to go, so. Be another.
4.
300,000?
Yeah.
250, 300,000, so, okay. So, yeah, we're going to be a little higher, but not as. Bottom line is, I think we're still doing very well, and fun, so.
December seems to be on our phone, just because a lot of people have enough there.
Yeah.
Yeah, does Brian want to be here?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Call him, sit against it. Time for a stretch a little bit again.
Okay, Alex, stand up, we're going to hope you both can turn yourselves around.
Don't get yourself hurt now. We just got you. I think Mulley or Mulley's son will pick up some pizza at noon, so if you're, Mulley after that, and then, Alex, you're welcome to have some too. Just write something nice about this.
We've got more than pizza.
Better add some donuts to that order, I guess. Extra soft caffeination.
I had my three cups of coffee, so.
You limited?
Yep.
Are we on schedule for all week?
I think so, yeah. Think we're getting through it pretty quick, actually.
Mm-hmm. Actually, good.
I mean, tomorrow.
Weather, 56 degrees and sunny today and tomorrow, we're, we're stuck in here with no windows, no.
Those are pretty.
Oh, sorry, I think we overlooked something on 127, I forgot to bring up, JC rep.
Oh.
We improved that already. Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's what I had changed on mine.
So everybody's good with the 150?
That's what I had changed.
We're going to have to increase the budget by 30,000.
Yeah, I had made that change on mine already, I'm sorry, Mark.
Yeah, that would be in. Line item is that, I forget.
Now they're going to have to go out and find us 4, 5, 6 million next year, you know, to keep track with what they did.
Economic, that's okay, yeah, that's the economic development line, so we'll have to increase that in total from 125,000 to 155,000. I guess there's some.
Oh, we do the 5,000 for salute to America.
Oh, yeah, that's in there too.
Yeah, 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 I had to think, yeah. He's still on it? Okay.
Yeah, there's at least four departments, we just got to wait till tomorrow. Couldn't come to that, well, EMS.
And that's got.
Emergency man, Nick, and Public Works and.
Those are the two they're going to take.
So, but I think we can probably be done by noon tomorrow.
Excuse me, what's, what's going to, tell me tomorrow's.
Tomorrow, we'll start with EMS, then, then Nick, then EM, Emergency Management.
And Nick, Emergency Management won't take that.
Yeah, and then Public Works around 9:30 or whenever that bid opening.
Oh.
Right, Eric has to come over for the bid opening, so he's, whenever that is, he'll.
I don't know why they just came through that in my office.
And then Cester will come.
I think, that's a good time to take a break. Seriously, we started at.
It's those four tomorrow, is that it?
Yeah, yeah, those are the four for sure, and whatever else we don't get through, but we might be able to get through.
What's left for today?
Well, in the afternoon, we got prosecutor and, and Pringer coming in after lunch.
Okay, I got lots of. I don't want, I don't want a slide presentation. PowerPoint, I don't. 25% decrease next year in, in IT?
On the capital spend side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to buy new computers. I did send you guys a document that showed like our, an addendum to our existing managed services contract for like the added, some added features and stuff. And I don't know that Mark and I got that in the, in the budget, because it came after the fact.
Yeah, I'll pull up your long schedule.
Are we on page 40?
Uh, you're on, no, you're on page 48.
Got it.
That would be your equipment service contract line, that's your big thing, right?
Yes.
There's a lot in that, so. Huber Managed, is that, is that the one we got increased?
Yes.
Up to 273, 840? Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Huber Managed Network Services Countywide?
Yeah.
Is that the one we're low on right now?
Yes.
That needs to go up? I wrote down two seventy-three, eight forty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically what that is, is, is we went through and we added some additional features on our overall security package, and that came up, and we had some, the, the multi-factor authentication licensing and things like that, so that's where that extra amount comes in, so it's actually on top of what we're currently spending, and that's for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then we're also at the end of that three-year contract after twenty twenty-four, so that'll be to, we'll have to go through and review it and work with, work with the vendor on getting a renewal done, so. But, yeah.
So we have to go out to bids?
No, that's all like on state contract, so we're able to purchase it through that. So that's a, that's a change that came in after the budget was submitted, so. And then the only other significant increase will be, we're adding the two new locations on Adams Street, and then also we're upping our internet bandwidth, and so you guys will get, actually get an email on that to get it added to the agenda for Tuesday. We'd already discussed it and approved it, but we'll get the paperwork signed on Tuesday.
Is that in the internet line?
Yes.
And we've already increased the budget accordingly?
We did.
To, should cover?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then the only other thing I did was I did put a five hundred dollar annual increase on top of the COLA for Brent Fisher.
So, yeah, that's the only difference in salaries.
I would like to, whoops. Visit with Sheila on salaries for IT. So I'm just gonna pause on a hard number right now. Let me go back to my, the, the schedule, okay, you got the schedule here.
I mean, that's it, that's, I mean, that's what's in, this is what's in the budget, the four, now four people, plus four percent COLA. I just didn't put in the extra five hundred dollars just because I didn't put in anything other than four percent, so. That's, that's how I came up with the two fifty-two. Well, three sixty, oh, I might, I might not have had all cell phones stymied initially, but anyway, yeah.
Now, I did go down significantly on, let's get this messed up, sales tax or capital, capital?
Oh, yeah.
Because we went from, what, we budgeted three, three fifty last year, and we dropped it down to two fifty this year, so we had a lot, a lot of expenses we had planned last year, and this year, we're gonna be upgrading some hardware, but it's not near the amount of hardware that we were gonna do.
That's back on the.
Back, what page is that on?
Uh, one eighteen, yeah, that's that capital.
Does that table include the BSA?
The, the, that's on the, the service contract line, is it the VSA?
So you do have that in the BSA cloud?
I'm sorry, no, no, we're, we don't, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I thought you were asking about the maintenance amount.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
No, I did not throw, put that out there.
Okay, so we don't have that in there either?
No.
So. Ouch.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that gentleman emailed me a quote, and, yeah, yeah.
Triple?
It's, it's up there, I don't remember the dollar figure.
It's like forty-some thousand right now, that's what we're paying.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Was it seventy-eight, more?
That sounds right. Uh, we could, I mean, there's, yeah, no, this is more of a finance thing than it is.
Finance, huh?
So like, for instance, right, like right now, we have an on-premise finance server, and so we have expenses associated with it, right, hardware expenses, ongoing software support expenses, maintenance expenses on the, you know, as far as like taking care of the hardware and stuff like that. If we, you go to a cloud model, from what I understand, is, is you get at least what, everything you have plus added features, and it's, it's all online, it's all hosted, so that's basically an all-in number as far as what they're proposing.
So it's like three times what we're paying now, but.
So it's one fifty-three, oh six oh, for the setup, implementation and everything, and then is it annually after that's ninety thousand, three sixty?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but.
I got it here, so if you want, if you're wanting numbers, otherwise.
Oh, the one fifty is a one-time?
That's the first year implementation, setup, right?
Yes.
That would include the ninety thousand annual, which would be after that.
Right now, we're paying about forty thousand annual.
Right.
Sure you're sitting down when you open that email.
The initial cost would be more than triple, yeah.
Well, you know, like I said, it's just, you know, mission critical systems and things like that, I think it's kind of a good practice to have those in a, in an environment like that, for lots of good reasons.
Not a hundred percent guarantee.
No, a hundred percent.
That changed the whole, seems like I remember at our county auditors meeting, that Steve Vernell was at our training, and he showed their cloud system looked a lot different than what, so it'd be some, lots of, some learning.
Countywide.
We'd have to ask some countywide training time on that.
Yeah, he, he said, of course, you know, they would be happy to do a presentation over and everything, so.
I think that's something we need to kind of discuss.
Your security, right?
Well, I was gonna say, I've got some questions that I'd ask in closed session security on it, so.
If we, if you haven't closed me on that, could you include me in on it?
Oh, sure, yeah.
You bring the donuts.
I knew you were considering it, but if you're gonna seriously consider it, I want to.
I want you to check with Jill and make sure it qualifies.
It qualifies, I don't need somebody to tell me it qualifies.
Security.
But we're not gonna budget for it right now.
No, I was just asking if that was included in it, because.
It is not.
Yeah, I got an email, it's like, ooh. So, but like I said, I got some other questions if we're gonna consider it, and.
That would, I do. Security question.
All right.
Yeah, then, but then to finish the capital request, yeah, down three fifty to three some to two fifty, yeah, so you're good with that.
Yeah, until I need more. But no, yeah, no, I should be good, I've, I've got pretty much what is gonna take up the capital is we're replacing the routers at each location. I did talk to the MS chief and let him know that we're gonna have some additional expenses for the new location, and also for the, and then we'll have to add some, we'll have to add some equipment over at the maintenance annex on Adams. Yeah, because we're gonna have that connection added over there, so.
Okay.
But, but yeah, I think historically, I don't, you know, get in close to my Macs, so.
So right now, when I look at page one eighteen, under information systems, equipment replacement slash upgrades, it says two, two fifty.
Yeah, that's the.
And that's the number?
Which is down from last year.
Okay.
Down about eighty thousand, three thirty, those are the last year.
Right.
I'm sure you're even, very close to that, are you, are you higher? Oh, are you?
Two forty.
Two forty, okay. Any other questions for Brian?
No, he's doing a fantastic job.
He is.
Tell him I was gonna confuse him by just being extremely nice.
Look at that confused look.
I called him Saint Brian.
Please. Send him over the paper. He'll watch it after this. Okay, yeah, thank you.
I'm done.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks. Keep going, building maintenance recovered, we just, well-planned, we gotta wait, that's, that's Eric. Public Administration, fifty-five. Much different, he, again, Ralph is one that asks for some merit.
Three times seven fifty.
He's asking for seven fifty for each of his three.
Right.
He's asking for half of what Larry's asking.
Which is, that's why this is a.
Yeah, 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 really, it is.
Put it in the pool.
Put it in the pool.
Okay, yeah. And the other thing on his, it's already been approved, but his new, what's that new system he's using?
Oh, oh, EMS, which is very confusing.
Which you already proved, and that, that puts his equipment service contract budget a lot higher, so.
Yes.
But you already proved it, so.
So when Ralph says EMS, it's different than when we, when we say EMS, right?
Same with CART.
Yeah.
We got Capital Area Rail Terminal and Jacket, that's got the county aid at Road Trust Fund, so.
CART's county.
CART, CART.
Forty-some years I've been working with state and local government, that's what CART is, county aid road trust fund, so.
And they changed it on us.
They, they didn't copyright it, though.
Well, probably not.
Yeah.
Anything else on, I think his pauper funeral budget, he had, I think he had to ask for more, but that's just.
You never know what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we can do nothing, and then we'll get like three.
We had to increase it, I think the, the request is gonna stay at the higher, higher level, fifteen thousand, what we're at actual this year, so.
I think we were originally paying like five hundred dollars, and then we upped it to a thousand.
Yes.
So it, it, and that doesn't. Doesn't cover it, but at least they, they get a nice area.
Anything, anything else on his?
On Ralph?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Health department, we already did. I mean judicial, we can go over it.
So much of that we did all the way.
Yeah, do we, I mean, as we talked about, we can't legally change anything. I mean, not a lot changed this year, they didn't ask for a lot more, but the, the biggest thing there would be the, the salaries, pre-trial. Well, like I said, actually.
Sixty-two.
Yeah, sixteen.
If you go into pre-trial and court services, court security, that's where the major changes were, but like I said, if we had a issue with it, we would have had to say something back in August when they presented.
Yeah.
Pre-trial, really, the total salaries is the same in total, we're going for next year, just because the two retirements, which dropped the.
Took the higher-priced guys out.
Yeah, the higher, they were making more than what, but the existing people actually, well, here, I can show you, we can just, let's just pull it up one more time here and go over it. For, for pre-trial, on top of the four percent COLA, the requested adjustments are another about seventy-five hundred dollars, majority of that to their, the hired, there are two new people this year to replace the, the two retirees, so mainly the, the, he's not out, they didn't ask for much more for them other than the COLA, the big increases are for the two experienced ones. Duncan, Duncan, so.
Is part of that tied to the law process change or the law enforcement side?
I.
Not in their salary, in their benefits.
In their benefits, yeah, that was, that they, they should get, yeah. And then, but again, their budget, two hundred fifteen thousand is the same as this year in total. Then one fifty-five. Yeah, there. Top of the COLA, he's, the adjustments are another thirteen-five on top of that. He's, their justification to get more parity to similar deputy law enforcement positions, understanding that it, I mean, Judge Beadham explained it, he knows he, they're not gonna get those positions up to exactly what the lieutenants and sergeants or whatever make him, but he's asked to get him closer, so. I don't know what to discuss there, I guess.
Nope.
Child support's gonna be later this afternoon, I guess. Lock. Juvenile's gonna be this afternoon. We could hit the coroner's budget real quick here on seventy-five. I guess, again, the agreement, we've got a really good deal, only have to pay him fifteen thousand a year, plus whatever the autopsies, again, those are coming in a lot higher this year than last year.
He has said, he is, he is, he loves Cole County, he's doing this for Cole County, and he is happy with.
Now you're talking coroner, you're not talking autopsies.
Autopsy's gonna, consider.
Well, is it, is he a coroner or a medical examiner?
He's a med, I mean, the, the, you gotta have a coroner's office, if first-class counties can elect to have a, not, to change it from an elected coroner to an appointed medical examiner, so. Yeah, we could, I guess we could change it. The way I inherited this budget, calling it county coroner's department, well, we could call it, if you want me to change it to medical examiner, we can do that, we technically do not have a coroner, we have a medical examiner, so I could change that.
And Oceans County AJ Probst is their coroner, so is he.
And that's a lot.
He's a third-class county.
Yeah.
We're first, that's the difference. Why don't you change it to what it's supposed to be?
Change it to medical examiner? Autopsies are, we had to increase, we had to do budget adjustments for that, yeah. All right. Prosecutor, emergency management, carts, that's tomorrow, public works is tomorrow. Cessers, both come in tomorrow, with the plan. Did you wanna go through sheriff's budget again?
No, I'm scared.
Gosh, that's about it, EMS. This is tomorrow.
Yeah, we're good.
And we pretty much went through the capital improvement. Well, the big part is public works, but. Well, the big part is public works, but, we'll go through tomorrow, but again, this schedule, any more to go over on that, I think we're.
So this afternoon is Pringer Center.
Prosecutor at one and Pringer at two.
You got any of them for tomorrow that we can?
I could try and get, we could try and get Chris over here.
If, uh, we wanna knock him out and get out earlier tomorrow.
Fine.
I think we're gonna probably have a little more discussion about the salary, what we've been putting in the merit pool, kinda how we wanna handle that, too, so that might be a longer discussion.
Might be similar to last year, we kinda ended the second day with overall what you wanna do with salaries, so.
Cause right now, we're just throwing them into the merit pool. You know, if we got some different ways we wanna do it. I mean, we got a COLA, we could do a COLA, plus a merit to where each department gets a little bit.
That's what I asked Mark to look at that, but.
Put a bigger pool in, that's, that's an option, yeah.
Change the four to a three and a two?
That's what I suggested to Mark, but I.
So we're kinda in timeout right now, right? So I can bug John again on his, we just got another mail.
Yeah, sure, we, yeah, we're open for anything now.
Those positions didn't have the step, steps in them at all, so they'd get a.
The lieutenant above.
They'd get the steps and then also the.
The salary adjustment.
Adjustment to have a different. I guess I just feel stupid for missing that when we talked about the other.
Well, I think, I don't think it's that. I think I didn't communicate it as well.
Yeah, whatever happened, I just, I didn't catch it then and.
That's how Brian told me to present, so.
Go ahead and act like it's your fault, your fault, that's, that's gonna.
Make sure you write that down there, Alex. If it weren't in, they'd be.
Brian, Brian, hour.
My computer just shut down.
Do you want me to go check with Chris and see if he can come this afternoon and study tomorrow with him?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Uh, at like twelve-thirty?
Twelve-thirty. Was Nick done? That much to talk about? What do you want?
Uh, actually, we could, maybe we could get Nick, too, either one. Try them both, see which one.
So what? At noon, pizza?
Yeah, I was just supposed to pick it up at noon, I figured it.
Okay.
Too soon enough, I probably should have put eleven forty-five, it'd be all right.
Come back at one, is that what you do for right now?
Or twelve-thirty if one of the.
Quarter one will come.
Come back at quarter one?
Yeah, if Nick would come then, we can get Nick done by one.
Yeah.
You know, Nick should be very, very simple.
Right, yeah.
So, do you wanna stand in recess till, what did we say, twelve forty-five or one?
Yeah, let's go twelve forty-five and see if we can get Nick here.
That'd give everybody time to do what they needed to do.
Gives me plenty.
Then y'all can have some pizza. Make sure y'all come hungry.
Is that okay, Alex?
Got plenty.
Okay.
Needs a break. Go outside.
Okay.
So, I'll make sure to stay in recess until twelve forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Let Don know we're done for now. Oh my God. Ah, pizza be here about twelve fifteen, Alex, too, so you're welcome. Have some. I think I lost connection, I'm gonna have to leave.
So, you leave the motion yet?
We did.
Yeah.
We are, we are. Okay, it is twelve forty-five PM on December fourteenth, we'll go back into session, budget hearings. I think we had tried to see if we could get a couple of our other, uh, department head and elected officials, but they're not here. Would we wanna go ahead and do, like, emergency managements?
We might as well go over it.
I, I.
I don't think there's a whole lot.
It's, it's.
There, that, nothing really controversial.
Yeah.
I don't think Nick is pretty much okay, but, you know, he'll, if he wants to come back tomorrow, we.
Yeah, he can, he can, but.
Go over it again.
Here, we got, at one, we've, we're probably busy, so if we can knock, if we can knock Nick out.
Yeah.
What pages he on?
Uh, eighty-five. Now, of course, he did talk about how his grant money, I think that SEMA FEMA grant is getting cut in half, so. How much you can do about it.
Yeah, we, I, no.
So then, is the city gonna help?
I guess.
Pay up the part that's not covered anymore then?
Should we look at their agreement and see if there's any way we can help for more?
Probably need to notify them and let them know, too. They may have a little bigger expense this year.
They already ended their budget here, so I'm not sure how long.
And we probably need to go back and address our agreement with them since it's rather old.
Someone can find that, yeah.
And, and maybe come up with a new twenty-first century agreement that.
It wouldn't hurt if it's, with the change in our funding mechanism.
Older than me.
What are you wanting to change there? I mean, is there something you want to change in it?
I don't know.
Cause I, if I remember correctly, it was pretty simple that the city and county split whatever wasn't paid for by the, uh, the other grants. That's why I thought it was fifty-fifty.
Well, we can leave it as.
At least.
Says the City of Jeff and the County of Cole shall each pay fifty percent of the cost of the operation of the EMA above any amount received from federal or state grants.
Okay, well, let's just leave it, that's good.
What's the date on that?
No.
July seventeenth, eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
Yeah.
So you're American? Gosh, that's old.
That was this many days old.
It's a good gentleman's agreement, you know?
That was pretty smart at three months.
We like these gentlemen's agreements.
Went downhill from there.
Agreement, it's a agreement.
Go ahead and say it, John.
Good to the government, so there's no gentleman involved.
Pitch that one up.
Let's see, who was here then?
That might have been Louise Carter.
Our, our proper grabs and Sharon Davis.
Sharon lost her.
Three that were the one I started.
You remember that?
Oh, yeah. I remember those.
Okay, well.
I remember those.
Okay. Well, anyway, yeah, but that's, you know, the revenues reflect a, a decrease, just because, uh, no control over that. At least the grant part. Yeah, and then salaries. Of course, that includes that extra person that he, he's asking for if the city will, but of course, the city has to agree to, to that as well, so. He's asking, he asked for it again. I, I mean, it's, whatever.
I'd almost take it, kinda like what we're doing with certified public, uh, appraisers and just say, if, if this would, you know, terminate, we can put it back in.
Okay. So you prefer we just take it out this time?
I don't see a need for us, they're just gonna drive up costs for something we don't need, in my mind.
All right.
No, we can always, if, if, if Nick gets a grant and if the city agrees to pay, you know, their portion, and then we'll pay our portion, then, then we're good, but until we, until he gets the grant, until the city, uh, it's.
You know, as a rule, I didn't put anything other than four percent COLA. This one, I decided to leave in because it was approved last, it was in last year's budget, too, so I just kinda left that.
Yes.
Left it as it is, but we, yeah, we'll, we'll. Take it out.
I know, I didn't want it in there last year, but.
Okay.
Well, it can always be, it can always be put back in.
Right.
If and when it happens.
And really, everything else is all about the same, there's no, no increase, not asking for anything more than any other, any other item, so. And those grants, those kinda get added. If he finds grants, they'll get added as a, a court order during the year, so.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Good.
So we still got nine minutes. I don't guess we wanna look at, at the, uh.
I mean, you can, we can look at, we can start. Do you wanna discuss the assessor's budget at all?
Yeah, we can, let's, let's take a look at, let's take a look at the assessor.
Kinda go over it for now.
He did call, he will not be able to make it in, he's battling a migraine, um, and it sounds like maybe tomorrow might be if he.
Okay.
He left the voice, no, I guess he'll always listen to us, I guess.
Let's do him now and if he, if he can make it tomorrow, we can always come back and.
All right. That's page ninety-seven and ninety-eight. Uh, of course, the assessor has this, it's a separate fund, um, and we get, you know, close to a million dollars in property tax, um, then, we've had this, the discussion about the state reimbursement is, uh, currently being held up.
We're gonna have it before the end of the year. He said so.
Well. Not sure that's gonna happen, but, yeah.
Question, if, if we would not have it, could we withhold that amount from his budget until we do get it?
His budget has to travel.
I mean.
What, what do you take out of his budget?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you take out. I mean, he, there's, there's, there's one, there's gonna be a carryforward of one point five million, so a hundred twenty thousand is, you know.
Can we just reduce that basis?
Well, could we, could we reduce, could, could we reduce that amount by a hundred?
It'll, it'll get reduced.
It's in the assessment fund. It, it has to stay, the, the money, the revenues that come in for the assessment fund legally have to stay there and have to be spent on the assessor's office or related.
He assured us.
You can't really take the money out of it.
He assured us when he was here that we would have that money by the end of the year.
I still think you should ba, um, use it to budget for next year. Right now, it's not even.
Well, I should probably add, I would expect we should get the money next year.
Or the year after, or?
I mean, we, I mean, we're, we're not, it's, it's not a, a totally lost right now. We can still get the money, right? As far as you know?
They haven't said yes and they haven't said no.
Okay.
The State Tax Commission, they.
Okay. You know, I could go ahead and add the.
Well, the assessor assured us we would have that money by the end of the year.
It's not looking that way, but.
He wouldn't lie to us.
Yeah, it is right now. I mean, obviously, we wanna get that money, and if we never get it, then that's, that's on him, uh, but it's still, the money can still come our way.
So do we have anything else that?
Well, salaries is the, the big thing. I mean, if, let, go through everything else, I don't think there's any, uh, again, after, other than salaries, I don't think there's any changes or a little bit of increase, I think, in postage, again, yeah, he's asking for a little, like, kinda like Larry, asking for a little more in postage, in printing and binding, cause those costs are going up. Everything else, I think, is pretty much the same. But yeah, salaries, um, if you saw his, if you want, oh, let's turn on the TV. And this is the schedule I sent you, but if you go to his tab, he's on a separate tab, cause he's in a separate fund, but, um, again, this is kinda where he's at now. This column, then the four percent COLA, and these are the additional amounts that he was asking for. Quite a bit. Total of sixty-five thousand additional requests. I mean, they, I, I will say, some of his employees are some of the lowest paid in the county. He's got people making thirty-two, thirty-five, you know, there's, there's hardly anyone in any of the other, I'd say somewhat comparable offices, like auditor, treasurer, recorder, there's really no one making lower than that or as low as that, so, I mean, I, I will say, I think, I think he might be overdue for some salary adjustments to get his people, um, at least a little closer to most other similar, you know, clerical type positions in other, other offices, uh, I, I will give him that.
What accounts to, what, ten people, and the total is sixty-five thousand?
I would generally agree with, with your statement there, however, um, someone who's been here for a little over two years getting a thirteen thousand dollar raise on a salary of forty, I, I think he'd have to be here to explain that one.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
And, and a ten thousand dollar raise, and a ten thousand dollar raise. Those are twenty.
Well, yeah, he's asking more for his appraisers. I, you know, I was mainly referring to like the clerks, the assessment clerks.
Yeah, I, yeah, right, and that's where I would generally agree.
That's mainly what I was referring to, but yeah.
Yeah, and I would think the starting wage for that could be definitely, um, she'll, we can look into that one, because that is one of the problems. Well, and if, if we're looking at moving maintenance to eighteen.
Yeah.
It's a low.
You know, last year, as I recall, we, we sort of broke out, well, here it is, the, the salary reserve a year ago was one sixty-eight.
Right.
We said, you know, if you can find certified appraisers, go for, matter of fact, we, I think we said, whatever you, whatever it takes to hire them, come back to us and we're more than likely will work in that direction.
And similar to last year, I put, I put in my, the recommended budget, another salary reserve for those same three positions. Two residential appraisers and a commercial appraiser. He, he is estimating that it would take, uh, at least fifty thousand to hire residential appraisers and sixty-two-five to hire. Now, this would be the certified, he's saying if he can find a, is that right? Is that what you call them? Sort of, if you got your.
Yeah.
Yeah. License or certified, yeah, licensed appraisers. That's what he's, uh, estimating that it would take to hire a, a licensed certified appraisers.
And I think the number we kinda gave him was between sixty and sixty-five thousand, which is right.
That's what he's saying for the commercial.
That's right in there, so.
He thinks a residential he could get for less, like fifty thousand.
And again, we didn't put it in the budget, we said, you find that person and we will fund the salary.
And that's what that, one hundred and eighty-four, nine, I, I put those amounts plus benefits, estimates and benefits, that's what the.
Yes.
One eighty-four, nine fifty-two for those three positions, if he can, if he can ever fill in, you know.
He does have positions posted on the, um, county website, I was trying to see what he's got posted at. I just posted one last week after Jack Iriza.
That's right, he's got one open, he's got an open position now.
But I think he's got four positions posted.
Okay.
I think.
The open and then the three new ones.
Okay. Salary is the big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we should treat it all the same, I mean, you know, if you're gonna put a pool for everybody else and.
That's what I'm saying to do with it right now. Or just however you wanna look at it, if we're putting it in a pool or however.
Or a reserve, yeah, or, yeah, however you want.
See, I'm like, I'd rather the, the lower, the lower salaried ones to me, or.
Well, especially if we put, if, like, someone said maintenance, if we, if we raise them to eighteen, we almost gotta do that for most everybody, right? I think.
I'd just put them in a, put in a pool and we'll move around.
I, I would suggest we, we sort of have, I don't know, maybe this gets too complicated, but, uh, a. a pool that is sort of broken between the, those that we need to get to comparable other employees in the county that you've talked about. And then the other pool, or the other portion of the pool is, is for the appraisers and assessors and those kind of things. You know, unfortunately, he has one, only one certified appraiser in that office. And I believe he, Mr. Butler is certified as a residential. But he occupies the commercial slot. He occupies a commercial slot. There is no residential, there is no certified residential appraiser there. Therefore, anybody who comes to work there and doesn't carry the certification could never get the certification there because you have to work under the supervision of a certified appraiser. I don't know if Mr. Butler's supervising someone. He, as he does commercial, can he supervise, he's licensed as residential. I don't know how that would work. And then besides, do we know if they, they have the base of a bachelor's degree maybe in order to even sit for the exam and get the experience?
I'm pretty sure you do.
Uh-huh, I am too.
I'm pretty sure you have to have a degree.
Yeah.
Because that's part of it. You can't just go out and get it. You gotta go to school and then you gotta go do the two years training and then take the test and all that, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I see what you're saying on that. Is he going to be able to do his job as a commercial appraiser supervisor and then train somebody under residential even to, you know, get them qualified?
I guess if, if you put money in a pool, say appropriated it, then you're saying some money, put in a pool and he can do with what he wants, like give it to his lower paid employees hopefully? And then an additional amount, maybe more in a reserve that...
You've made a, you've made a, a case for several lower paid employees, the clerks maybe, and someone else who are underpaid compared to the rest of the county. I think that's one argument. Another one is these other folks
Right.
who have some twenty-five percent increases here that may not...
He's going to have to come request it.
Sure.
So we can, we can hold his feet to the fire if...
I just think when it's all said and done, the money we've been putting in the pool, it may be close to that and it may not. I think I'm going to be leaning towards, let's look at a percentage and do something maybe across the board as a merit that can be put into each department, because I, just if we're doing it this way, just because the elected official or supervisors or directors have asked for raises. I mean, next year, if I was the elected official, I'd just come in and say, I want all my people to get a ten thousand dollar raise, you know? You know, with that route. I, I just want to try to find something that's going to be uniform, doesn't have to be exactly the same for everybody, but just to... I don't know, the, the pool is just kind of where I'm putting stuff to kick it off until later on for more discussion. I don't even know what, what percentage that pool is going to be of, of the salaries, or if we look at that and take that percentage overall and split it up. There's some of them that I think need to go through HR and the positions need to be looked at to see if it justifies it. You know, even the maintenance worker positions. I was looking at them online, Googling some salaries. They're kind of all over the place too, so... That's just kind of where I'm going to go whenever we get done with all that pool money.
I mean, even the total in GR alone, the request versus a four percent, it, it would add up to another about five and a half percent.
Additional five?
Yes. On top of the four right now, and that's very few people, not everybody.
Right.
But if you look at this request though, these are pretty significant compared to the other ones.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this was a...
He's asking for triple, the four, you know, the four percent is twenty-one thousand and the additional adjustments he's asked for is sixty-five, so that's, you know, that's... Sixteen percent, yeah, yeah.
On top of the four.
Yes. No, I, I agree. He's asking for a significant amount of money. Like I said, on the flip side, he does have some of the lower paid, lowest paid clerical type employees in the county, so.
Yeah, when you start adjusting those, you've got to keep going so you don't get compression.
Damn right. Yeah, they make those some hoes too.
Okay.
Come up.
Oh, well.
Come on in, lock it.
Yep.
Ready as we'll ever be, probably.
Let's see here, page seventy-seven. I think we pretty much, um, well, maybe a couple things, but I mean, other than salaries, I think we're, we don't really disagree on anything. There is one area where your costs have increased quite a bit, criminal prosecution, that's in, that's in your quest. I put the same amount, recommended, so, but...
And I think as we discussed from last year, at least one way we could try to offset costs on that would be through, and I gave you guys, I think I proposed coordinates for that. We also have, Corinne, I might go into this a little bit. But on some other considerations for offsetting costs, one thing that we have started doing that the office had not, I believe, ever previously done was getting reimbursement through Missouri DOC for cases that we prosecute from Algoa and JCCC. We get...
Well, we get five hundred dollars per case that goes to trial, and three hundred dollars for each case if it is...
Filed and prosecuted.
Yes.
There's some disposition on it, yeah. So the office previously did not do that. I'm not sure why, but we're doing it now.
So we have never done it?
Never. I don't believe we have.
I think we had done it quite a long time ago, in the early two thousands, it had been done, but it's been a really long time since then. We actually submitted in the last one, I think earlier this fall, we submitted a settlement back about four thousand dollars back for a few cases.
We got thirty-eight hundred dollars so far back this year, yeah. Actually, that, that's what the, but we put thirty-eight hundred dollars in that revenue for next year. It should be more, right?
It'll be a lot more.
Okay. Well, we should probably change that then. Well, how many, you got a figure in mind or...
Well, we're going to try and run and see how many DOC cases we have. We have the two prisons here in Jackson City, we do prosecute quite a few cases. I think the one is a maximum security prison. Ed Quinn does all those cases, so there's a lot of cases that come out of there. Some of them are just, they may be like sexual, misdemeanor cases, drug cases, things like that. Some of them are like, um...
Assaults on prisoners. I believe what you tend to see is that Algoa, there are a lot of contraband and/or controlled substance offenses there. It's a medium security prison. People with drug offenses tend to end up there as opposed to JCCC is a maximum security where you have robberies, murders, things like that. Crimes against, violent crimes against people, and so that tends to be the the facility from which we get more of our serious felony crimes, attacks on guards, attacks on other inmates, occasional homicide, that kind of thing.
Being conservative, do you think twenty-five thousand is a good dollar placehold?
Maybe twenty-five.
Okay, twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Was there any items, line items besides that?
I don't think so. That should take...
Do you have any questions about any line items?
No.
Okay, all right, so, salary?
Yeah, just a little bit more discussion on that. I know. Corinne also, I know that I previously put together a PowerPoint for you guys, and I made up those slides. Corinne has put together...
I said one of them is Brett Jones.
Just some more, just, and Corinne went through the trouble of getting some more numbers and things like that, just a little bit of a...
Thank you.
And I can let her actually kind of go through it, since she's the one who prepared this particular presentation.
Yeah, so I think I'll make it up and just kind of go through this if you guys want.
Did you have an extra copy? Well, I, I kind of want one for my budget and Debbie, one for Debbie if I want.
So, yeah, I just wanted to put this together just as a means of telling you all why we're asking for salary increases. Not just that we're asking for more money. I went into, did some research on what people were paying, because we used to, as far as like, we used to lose a lot of people as far as like in the legal field. We'd be at risk of losing good employees to usually the private sector, people who would leave to report private defense attorneys.
And for reference, Corinne previously worked in the prosecutor's office before coming back as the office manager, so she's...
Right.
How long were you there?
So I was here, I think I started back in twenty-twelve, fourteen. And then I left to work for the attorney general's office for a few years, and then I actually worked for the United States Attorney's Office for a couple of years before coming back. And then back here, so. So I've been in a few different places, but I know that's typically where people go because the private sector does tend to pay a lot better for people to go over there. But now, so last year, the state had a really big bump for their employees. It gave them about eight percent or a little bit more than eight percent. So I started looking at that, and what we're paying our employees. And we have some employees in our office that have been there, Amanda Wilson, she's been there ten years. She was there whenever I was there. We do have some attorneys that have been there about that long. Amanda Landrum's been there ten years or more. So if you go to the, I think, third, third page, I looked up some comparison, our office versus local state government salaries. So you can find all these salaries on the Missouri accountability form. I just looked up. Got all these numbers from there, so it's all public information. It just varies, so we have different, we just have different positions in our office. So we have one receptionist position, so the first group there is what our office pays, so local county. Our receptionist per biweekly salary is fifteen sixty-six. We have twenty-six pay periods, so she gets forty thousand seven sixteen. Local state government, I didn't find too many of those, but that's what their salary is, the range there. Nineteen forty-seven, they have twenty-four instead of twenty-six, so their salary is ranging from forty-seven thousand three seventy-six to fifty-one thousand. Those are at the AG's office. The next is legal assistants, so there's a lot more of those around the state than there is receptionist. Their range is thirteen forty-six times twenty-six, so thirty-four nine ninety-nine, that's on the low end. Or, I'm sorry, this is for us, thirteen forty-six times twenty-six pay periods, so ranges from third, right under thirty-five thousand. And then the highest paid, highest paid legal assistant we have in our office is forty-two thousand. And then as opposed to local state government, on the low end, it's forty-four thousand five twenty at Department of Revenue, who's notorious, like the lowest pay, they pay lower, to twenty-six thirty-two seventy-one, and that's sixty-three thousand for their legal assistants at Department of Health. And then we go to the next one, which is paralegals. So, Pol County, this is actually, I'm the only paralegal here in the office, and I have a dual position as paralegal and office manager. So this nineteen twenty-six ninety-two, times twenty-six pay periods, right at fifty. And then as opposed to local state government, on the low end, for them, it's twenty-two forty-one times twenty-four pay periods, fifty-three thousand seventy-four at Department of Public Safety, and then ranges to twenty-six seventy-four thirty-eight times twenty-four to around sixty-four thousand. And then I found one legal office manager at MoDOT, and again, like I said, my position is too different. I hold both the paralegal and legal office manager. So again, here at Pol County, it's fifty thousand as opposed to the one at MoDOT, which is seventy-one thousand seven ninety-three eighty-four. There's actually an open position over there right now. Victim Advocate, again, there's, we have three of those in our office. One of them is a funded position through the RAC. So she's, she doesn't really belong to us. And then we have two that work for us, so in our office, the range is fifteen thirty-eight forty-six times twenty-six pay periods, so it's right under forty thousand to sixteen thirty-eight thirty-six times twenty-six pay periods, so to forty-two thousand. And then as opposed to the two positions at the AG's office, which is maybe sixteen sixty-five thousand, so that's quite a big difference there.
And just a note on those positions, I do realize those are predominantly funded through VOCA, because we're on that grant, so...
And then...
They'll, they fund a certain percentage of, or a certain, I don't think it's a percentage, I think it's a set amount toward each salary that they fund. Anything you go over, the county is responsible for.
Right. And then as far as the APAs, I did not get their salaries. I asked, I asked these support staff to send me theirs. So I didn't get the APA salaries, but you can see the numbers are on the red. As opposed to what they are at local state government, it's a wide range, but it's usually between sixty-nine, like right under seventy thousand to the largest salary, which is around a hundred twenty-six thousand. I mean, it's just a wide range within the state. But a lot of the, like the mean salary for them would be around eighty-five thousand. And I think right here in Pol County, we start them right at fifteen sixty-seven, right?
Currently, it's officially at fifty-four.
If you go on the next page, I might talk just a little bit more about the legal assistance salaries that we have in different agencies around the state. So Department of Mental Health, on the low end, they start them around forty-five thousand. On the high end, they get paid around sixty-three. Department of Revenue is around forty-five. Department of Conservation is around forty-eight thousand. And the Public Defender is around forty-seven thousand. So as you can see, all the state agencies in comparison to what we pay, our support staff is quite a bit higher, even though we have some support staff that have been with our agency for quite a long time.
I'm sorry, and I may have just actually lost my train of thought. But, yeah, it just did, so why don't you keep going, I'll see what you're...
Sorry. I have a tendency to talk a lot, so. So why do our employees deserve a salary increase? Why is it necessary for us? Another, our employees deserve to have the state agencies that I was just talking about. Our caseloads at the prosecutor's office are very large. So we have our caseloads ranging anywhere from a hundred and fifty to around seven hundred open cases. So some of the, like the, the smaller caseloads that may be between a hundred and fifty to two hundred would be like the bigger, higher profile cases, like the murders and... would be like the bigger, higher profile cases, like the murders and things like that.
More complex litigation cases. So, I mean, I guess I do kind of remember what I was going to say. But, you know, like when I was at the AG's office, my caseload was like 20, maybe 30 cases. And you come here and you're doing, I mean, like the smallest caseload we have is four or five times the size of that. And right now, the AG's is starting people at 70, great to hear. Just starting straight out of law school. So, when you're talking about, most of our legal assistants are working with either one or two attorneys. And we try as best we can to assign them based on what the caseloads are, but we still end up with legal assistants working well over 1,000 cases trying to keep track of the due filings, make sure that the attorneys are aware of the court date bond hearings, that's a huge thing. Trials, getting subpoenas out for hearings, and if we don't get those subpoenas out appropriately, the case might get discussed. Making sure that we have all the evidence, coordinating with the law enforcement agencies to make sure that we have all the evidence in the case that's necessary to prove guilt before we go to trial, things like that. So, and I guess I'll let you continue. And I do realize we keep talking about state agencies, state agencies, state agencies. When we are at county, however, I think we need to be realistic here and realize that when we're talking about employees, not just in the prosecutor's office, but I think in county government as a whole, one of our big competitors is the state, just because of where we are being in the Capitol. And so that's why I think we keep bringing up what's paid, paid for our salary when it comes to this, so.
Well, earlier in the year, we had a couple of, like Locke, Scott Fox and I, we had worked in state government and we were trying to think of people like who might be good. We had a victim advocate that we were like, who would be good for this position, who would be good for this position? And we were unable to bring anybody over because we did not pay them enough. So that's one of those things, like, we don't have, we can't bring people in because we can't pay them a good salary like that when they come over here. We can't find someone that's retired or someone who's in a position who really doesn't need money. So, it's not just the problem of being able to keep people, but being able to bring people on as well. So also, our legal assistant, we have fewer legal assistants than we do attorneys. So sometimes the legal assistants are assigned to two attorneys instead of just one. So, I was assigned for the past year to both Locke and Scott Fox, so they both have high profile cases. Scott Fox has a lot of them, Locke has a lot, so had around a little over 600 cases. So I was trying to manage all those and then manage the office, so it's like a lot of things to manage. Amanda Wilson had Amanda Landrum, who had all the drug cases, so that was several hundred. And then she had Wilson, who had a couple hundred. What's that? Luke Miller, oh, sorry. So, yeah, it's just, our employees work hard, every single one of them that's there. And then each of the attorneys manages a court bucket, as well as each of the legal assistants are responsible for running that court bucket before the attorneys go down to the docket. Also, if we lose one of the employees, the cost of losing them is high for us because it's hard to find someone. They have to be skilled and they have to care enough about the case. It's not just a, a lot of people, I think, have the misconception that this kind of job, especially for a staff position, is a data entry position, and it's not a data entry position. You have to find someone that has skills and you have to find someone that cares enough because it really is a matter of public safety. If you find people that don't care or just want to warm a seat and get a paycheck, it's not going to end well.
They don't last. They burn out even quicker if they realize this kind of work isn't for me. You know, people have to, in our office, they have to read reports of child sexual abuse. And so, we know that they sacrifice a little something in terms of salary when they choose this line of work as opposed to going in the private sector where a lot of people could be making double, if not more, with their skillset. So it is a group of people who are very passionate about what they do. And for too long, I think, we've not really been able to figure out how to handle the issue of raises. I think it kind of changes every year. I know one year I came before the commission and asked for essentially a pool of money. And that got turned down because I didn't articulate exactly how I wanted that money spent. And then last year, we ended up getting a small pool of money. Now, granted, it wasn't very big. But it just seems like to me, and obviously it's my position that yes, we do need to increase our salaries, but I think just as important going forward, not just for prosecutor's office, but for the county as a whole, is to figure out how we address the issue of merit raises and raises for longevity for people who have been here, you know, five, 10, 15 years, and rewarding that as well. If you look at the Public Defender's Office specifically, I know, you know, they start people out at 60 now. And then after one year of good work and service, you're eligible for a bump up to 65. I think it was 65, I know it was in the previous slides I sent to you guys. After, after that, after three years of successful service, you're eligible for another bump. And then after that, for continued quality work, you can make up to X amount. And we don't really, at least as far as I'm aware, the county doesn't really have anything like that policy-wise in place. And I think that would go a long way toward constantly addressing the money issue every, every year.
I understand why you're comparing it to the state, but where do you fall with other, like, well, Boone County's probably not a good example. Let's say, I don't know, Callaway, Camden.
No, I gave the.
Are those in, are those in there somewhere?
Yeah, there is, when you look at the average salaries that I was able to do, that I put in our last PowerPoint I gave to the commission. The average starting APA salaries that are in that are pulled directly from a survey that went out. That went from, and that was for prosecutor's offices and other first-class counties. I do not know exactly what offices entered that survey, but I do know that.
I mean, obviously, a place like, like Jackson County, Salons County could certainly skew that figure, but, but yeah. I was just curious if you knew where, stood compared to, well, let's say Camden County might be the closest, most similar-sized county.
Cape Girardeau, I think. Camden, I don't believe is because it's a third-class county, or first.
Camden is first, yeah.
It's grown, consider.
Several years ago, a long time ago, yeah. When I was still at State Audit's Office, we, they went from third to second, then to first real quick, and we don't, we only, gosh, I bet that happened 15 years ago or more.
I think Cape Girardeau, I talked to their prosecutor, I think he was starting people at 7.
County, I look at the COLA.
I'm purple, that's.
Yeah, there. Anyway, just, that was my question.
I always think, building on what Locke was saying a little bit earlier about the burnout and things like that. We are lucky that right now, and the team that we have, we have a really good team as far as both attorneys and support staff that are willing to work together. Everyone jumps in and helps. If someone needs to be gone or if there's an emergency that comes up, the people that we have now have been trained, they're skilled. And despite the high-pressure environment that they're subjected to every day, they continue to do well. We've changed some things over the past year, where we're having regular meetings, we are doing training. And our employees do deserve to, we recognize for that. Like you said, they, all of the employees in the office are subjected to looking at things that are to people that may not be aware of things that are happening in their own backyard, in their own county. And I think that's important to note. And the victim advocates are also subjected to that, not just by looking at those sort of, that sort of material, but also just from hearing firsthand accounts from the victims themselves. The other thing I was going to talk about was, and not only do, does our pay not match up to the state government, so we're, we can't compete to the pay that, you know, we might be losing somebody to a state government position, but our benefits also don't, don't match up to state government. We've got a couple of young people that we've hired this year and have only just, right, they've only just recently realized that we don't have any parental leave for the count. So, we've got a young lady that is expecting, and she doesn't, she won't get any parental leave at all. And she hasn't worked long enough to where she won't be able to get any FMO, FMO either. We have another young lady that's recently married, who wants to have a baby at some time in the future, and who's doing really well. She's bright, we hope to keep her, you know, for as long as she will stay. But we just don't know if she will stay because if she's never going to get parental leave, she may not. And that coupled with the fact that we can't compete with.
Just the salary, in the first place, it does make it tough.
Maybe that one thing, but I would argue our benefits are better in the state.
State employees have to pay.
100% insurance, we pay, all the retirement, so.
Right, right, I mean, and that's the thing, we do have two retirements, but again, like if you're looking at someone that's young and someone that's looking at having a baby, you know, that would be one thing that would make me turn away. You know, if I was looking at working for the state and working for the county, I'm not going to tell you probably if the state's going to pay me six weeks.
It's better than no weeks.
Well, the difference between your ask and the budget officers is about $46,000, right?
Yeah, I mean, here, or.
Their total adjustments are 50,000.
Yeah, the total adjustments in this column is about 50,000, that they're asked, on top of the COLA. If you look at my, the salary schedule, or the, this salary schedule I put together, where current salary's there, COLA, total would be 37, 38,000, and then the additional adjustments that they're requesting is another 50,000, so that's what.
I was looking at the numbers on the legal assistant, there's two of them, I think you're requesting 1,500 adjustment, and two of them, you're looking at a $4,000 adjustment. Then on the assistant prosecuting attorneys, there's one of them at a $4,000 adjustment, and the other two of them at 1,500. So I didn't know if that was.
But that was just more, I think, we were looking at, and I have since actually gone through and adjusted that even, and I'd be happy to send that to everyone. I think when I was initially looking at it, I was looking at longevity and trying to match up a little bit better with some of the other agencies I looked at and researched. Ideally, I think I would like to see some people get a little bit more just on the merit side of things. Again, I don't really know how to address that other than I asked for it. Any comments, questions?
No, I think Corinne throw these into the same pool.
It's not a big ask.
An end discussion.
But.
Well, and I don't know if we're doing, I know that there's been talk about a pool for other counties, for other county offices or agencies. And if that's the situation, I'll, again, I toyed with that a little bit more earlier, and so I'll send you what my ask would be in there.
Okay. I don't have any more questions or anything?
So the thought would be to do what we've been doing today?
Yeah.
With this work with Sheila, see what the pool is. I'm curious about the other counties, I mean, we, we all live with the other state numbers all, every day. But the Capes, the Camdens, Boone maybe, I don't know, not so much. Franklin. Some of those sort of sister counties in a bit of.
Callaway, I mean, I mean, they're.
Callaway, Boone, aren't they a joint?
They're joined as a circuit.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a little different than.
The prosecutor's offices are the same. It's just the judicial circuit, the judges themselves are a little different.
But they're second class, they're not, they're smaller, but a lot smaller. They were once first class.
What's that? Oh, they were once first class.
Not that long ago, yeah.
Well, that's all the nuclear plant there.
It's depreciated.
Okay, I don't know when we plan to exactly talk about all these adjustments and exactly how we're going to handle those, if we're going to do that at the end of the day tomorrow, if we're going to do a standalone discussion next week, one day.
It's a pretty big discussion.
Yeah, we might have to do a standalone.
Until we wear somebody down and we get somebody to agree with the other one, so. And I mean, I think anybody that wants to come and sit in discussion, or you can listen to it while we're doing it. Participate, if y'all got any great ideas to try to fix it across the county. I think we've got this issue in a lot of departments, so I think it's definitely something we need to take a look at.
Thank you.
I think we plan to, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's going to be one hell of a big bucket.
I don't know. It's going to empty pretty fast.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What page are we on?
Trying to figure that out. Oh, got it. Oh, we did not go over his child support budget.
Lots.
I guess it's similar.
Was there, was there a lot of difference?
Here, sorry, real quick.
Page.
Yeah.
Child support is paid 69. And again, the only thing is like salaries where he's got, and they're not asking for as much, but on top of the COLA, there is requested adjustment is totals like.
Eight thousand?
No, 37.
Increase in mileage.
Right there. 37, 80, or 41. So, anyway, that's, sorry, forgot about that before he walked away. Yeah, because that's his apartment.
We're on page 69?
69.
Oh, I was on the revenue side, I'm sorry.
Anyway, but typically, their office is almost, pretty much fully funded by state reimbursement, so, anyway. All right, sorry. Now what page are you on? 72, okay.
So I don't have, first, good afternoon. Again, when I did my presentation, I moved the information that I, that I wanted you all to consider. I had conversations with each of you, I think. I had conversations with each of you, I think, discrepancies in the salary. I will make note that at that time, I was waiting for the contract to come back from Department of Health and Senior Services team, I think I've received it today, and they offered a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, seventy-six thousand of that would go back towards the salaries, I believe that marked nice difference is a hundred and one thousand, and then he would have the seventy-six thousand that would be reimbursed by the Department of Health and Senior Services, though it would have to be between December and Jan, or January. So, I think that's the only unknown piece that was there when I did my presentation for the budget. Our ask is, is we need help in getting employees, we can't even retain employees, we are consistently functioning down with mandatory overtime, there is no quality of life for the twenty-four-seven facility. We're not asking to make our employees more comfortable, we're asking to get employees high-risk, it's dangerous, three injuries in five months, and or at approximately thirty-one thousand dollars, thirty-two, thirty-one thousand, a hundred thousand is what it's going to start.
So, your, this additional revenue would come in where? Under the juvenile detention personnel line?
No, so it's an entirely different.
Oh, it'd be, oh, it's a grant, okay.
And I just, we just received the contract, and so I haven't looked at all of the nuances, it hasn't been signed off on, but it is for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Has to be extended by July thirty-first.
Is that all personnel?
No, so we asked for seventy-six thousand of personnel.
Okay, that was seventy-six thousand, okay.
We all asked for a, is the office supplies a large number?
You did say seven, okay.
Some premature answer, conference table, waited for a trip of detention, so.
All right, thank you, okay.
Grant. We have to get signatures, and then we're going to have to discuss.
Next week's meeting, present to the commission, okay.
Is there some, the correct term is not trickiness or maneuvering or whatever, but this June thirty expiration date that you mentioned?
July thirty-first.
I'm sorry, July thirty-one, and we've got, we, we take in terms of a calendar year, right?
Correct.
So, is there a way that, that these dollars, these seventy-six thousand dollars could be expended for person A, B, C, D, and then, and burned, burned up in seven months?
So, that's the flow we apply for, I asked Debbie if we would be able to utilize the funding, so it's to go towards people, so anybody who works directly with, who could have COVID, so all of our youth specialists, so it would be my hope that we would extend that out first, so that we can utilize it all. And I've not read through the details of it.
We would have to jump through several hoops to, to be legitimate in how we allocate costs and, and burn up to seventy-six. We've got an expert in jumping through hoops over here. Yes, yes. Yes, hoop jumper. Okay.
Do you want to go through specific? I mean, I, I think it seems like your biggest requests are for the youth specialist, right? They're the largest, right?
Those are the, the eleven thousand area, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the higher ones, yeah. In fact, that's the majority of your requests, right?
Yes.
Majority of the additional.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, we don't disagree on any other line item, do we? I don't think, yeah. Not that I don't disagree with it, it's just I, the approach I took, I was just going to put the four percent in and then.
It's the only line of discrepancy.
Yeah.
When you, when you threw the numbers together, Toby, you had a goal at, at the end to be at, at a certain number. The fact that we're doing a, or we're proposing a four percent COLA, did that drop your request number down because the COLA was coming, or did you just add the COLA on top of what you would have otherwise asked for?
Yeah, so we're just asking for the end salaries to be at a certain spot, and so whatever is offset by that COLA, our goal is that the salaries are at the asking point of our request.
Yeah, because you, you got, it's like forty-six thousand for youth specialists, threes, forty, let's see here.
One.
Forty.
Forty-six for the ones, forty-eight for the twos, fifty-two for the three.
So, you've got your operational supervisors, and they supervise the rest of the youth specialists. Morris is in forty-six to forty-eight, and then fifty-two for supervisors.
Yeah, give me those again.
Forty-six to forty-eight per youth specialist, and fifty-two for the supervisors of the youth specialist.
Okay.
Forty-six would be like the start, yeah, because I see your more recently hired ones, your one, yeah.
The ones?
Forty-six, yeah.
Okay. We should have asked about salaries yesterday. Or did we?
I did not.
We, we took a trip to, uh.
Joplin.
Joplin and toured their, their juvenile center. Should have asked a few of them, what, how much you make, right? I don't know.
Call and ask? Call and ask. Be interesting.
I'll say the same as I did for like the assessors, the other youth specialists or some of the lowest-paid employees in, in camp, so.
And what, what, generally, what, what credentials does a youth specialist have when they start with you?
So, they're going to have to, we have people who don't have any education, that they are going to have to be at least twenty-one, and they have to be able to pass all the background checks with social services, the child abuse network screenings, they have to be drug-free, no marijuana, no anything.
Residential, they have to have a high school diploma or a high.
So, high school.
All right. And today, if, under the, before we made any adjustments, when they'd come in today, you'd offer them a job at how much?
If they came in today, we would offer them a job somewhere between thirty-one, two, for watching, they had experience within their agency or an education, but most of them started thirty-one, two. I'm sorry, thirty-two, nine.
Thirty-two, nine, yeah.
But if the sheriff hired them as jailers, he would offer them a job at?
She's gone, don't give them any ideas.
But put them in a room, I'm going to say, I'll never take any of your employees, but hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Fifty thousand.
At eighteen, so our requirements are more rigid, I, you don't do child abuse network screenings?
No, we do, history.
And they, their employees can start at eighteen, and ours have to be twenty-one, and by the time you have a twenty-one-year-old, who's going to be making thirty-two thousand, and then there's mandatory overtime, holidays, evenings, weekends.
I would add too, part of, Matt and I are constantly asking our staff to do overtime, but a majority of our staff have a second job, which appears their ability to do in the overtime. They're working, one of our youth specialists there, he has a, works spending thirty-one hours a week in the Nards, so he's, a lot of them are unavailable for any kind of a second job, for overtime with us because of the responsibilities of the second job.
It's constantly taxing, it's exhausting for the people who supervise and have to consistently, every day, wonder how we're going to meet the separate core ratios to fill those slots. We asked staff to leave on Monday, our staff for the holidays, and that's response is, well, this week, we are, the closer we get to that day, who knows what's going to happen? When I submitted this, we were at six of nine positions for our full-time, for our full-time positions, and we have to have every position full, and every position working all of their hours to meet our ratios. So, when we're down to be full-time, then everybody's in mandatory overtime, and everybody has a second job because the salaries are so low.
If they work, please give me, you worked on Sunday evening.
It's, it's constant, there's that constant call, and the staff is so new that they consistently have questions, which taxes everybody, there's consistent phone calls, everyday phone calls, how do we handle, what do we do, and then they turn a birthday leave and start the process over again. And these, these are not, we're not reading reports of abused and neglected children in gruesome acts, we're managing the children on-site who have endured the things that people are reading about, as we read about them too.
What's the difference between the youth specialist and the J O?
A youth specialist works directly on the unit, and the deputy juvenile officers are in the court services branch, so they're supervising the kids that are in the community that are going to court, and the specialists are in-house working with the kids.
Gotcha. So, they're on the detention side and residential side, specialist and J Os, okay. I didn't know if there was any difference in there, because I just, I know on the detention side, there are some challenges.
So, the detention and residential side both, we house many of the same youth, so in detention, we have youth who can really only be maintained in cells. On residential, we can take some of those same kids and hold them over, hold them non-securely, so they can't, they're not safe to be in the community, but they don't have to be in a cell. We serve kids who have been diverted from Division of Youth Services, who have escalated needs on the unit, we take emergency care replacements from the Children's Division. So, the needs on both residential and detention are virtually the same. In detention, you have cells that offer an eight or area of control, while on the unit, if they escalate, and they do, that's where two of the head injuries came from, is an emergency care, who's been in care since he was eight, having been abandoned by his parents and sexually abused on the streets, in his homes with his parents, so he's eighteen now, but he is all in detention.
Are all of the youths Cole County residents?
We currently have one out-of-county emergency care replacement, and then we will hold a Division of Youth Services where we have a lot of needs. And we had one of their out-of-county youth placed with us here a few weeks ago, and it was an application that lasted a couple of months where they needed attention, and we had one.
So, when we do hold for Division of Youth, do they compensate us for that?
They do, so if, if we're holding one of their youth that is diverted, that is with them, that is placed with us, that is a hundred and forty-five dollars a day. If they're in detention, it would be sixty-five dollars a day.
What is it?
Sixty-five dollars.
Which is sort of what we pay when we put one of ours somewhere else?
Yes, and we are looking at raising all of those rates statewide, those rates are going up, so we're looking at raising our rates, changing rate versus as well, maybe seventy-five dollars a day for detention, but it's infrequently, we utilize those beds for out-of-county kids, because we currently have two of our own kids, our kids housed in a dare, so we all frequently have beds in detention that are available.
Right.
And then the Children's Division reimburses us a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a day for an emergency care.
There's, to me, there's something patently unfair about a single-circuit juvenile that we, that we are, so much supported by the local county versus a multi-county which gets state funding. Is that right? I mean, am I accurate here?
Yes, they receive state funding, so we're first class, and Cole County supports us, they do reimburse us for salaries, and that is the, the reimburse is a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, the juvenile detention personnel is the state reimbursement for our positions. They manage the entire circuits, the buildings, salaries, everything for other counties.
Also, the state, they, they pay defer comp, and then also, we're only getting others eligible for service, or our hospital services.
Right.
That is true. If any benefit difference from the state, it would be the juvenile department, as far as that goes, but.
Makes no sense. No, I, it's a head checker.
County being part of a multi-county circuit gets much better.
Deal.
I don't think.
No sense at all.
Can we, can we just secede and we'll go overcome?
No, no, we want to, we want to annex a county or sort of invite another one, almost pay them to join us, all right, join our circuit.
I'm not sure what the benefit was, but it's definitely how.
As long as they had good kids in that county, we'd like it.
So, take Monatara, Osage?
I don't have any more questions.
I don't know what the answer is, but.
I, I would, Toby, seriously ask you to maybe swing back to those folks down in Jasper? Let's see. Yeah. We have contact down there now, right?
Actually, talk to him this morning.
Okay. Do you know what a dare, are there salaries, are we, any idea? I know it's not quite the same, it's a smaller county, but are we?
Well, see, and that's, that's a five-county.
Way off what they pay, or, oh, it's state, that's state.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it'd be good to know, even though they're not quite like us.
And the D I S facility started at forty-eight thousand. And that's where they started, they've sold a couple of our.
Do, do, is there a logical progression for your youth specialists that, that can stay with you long enough to go one, two, three, and into something else?
So, we have three that sort of have been with us the extended amount, two, Maurice and Jeff.
Yeah, Maurice is an operations supervisor.
So, Maurice was a youth specialist, now he's an operations supervisor, and we have another, our daytime, youth specialist, he's been with us ten years.
He just got his tenure.
Ten years. We will promote him to a supervisor when the position allows, we did ask him at the last junction that he can't afford to quit his second job at the salary, and so he can't be available because it is a twenty-four-seven availability, so we can't promote him because he can't quit a second job in the Nards, because he can't afford to.
Wow.
I would say probably two-thirds of the youth specialists have a second job, or they are working all the others at the Nards.
Okay.
I'll check the question. Thank you.
Thanks.
No discussion on the new facility?
Well, we could give a quick recap of what we saw yesterday, I guess, Toby, if they're interested. We had a Uber driver take us to Jasper and back yesterday.
Actually, that's one of the nicest things that's ever happened to me, so I'll take it.
So, you're, is it a promotion or is he a motion?
They have a, they have a very nice facility down there, it's a secured facility, when you walk in the door, front door, no matter who or what you are, I think you, you get scanned, you get through the, you gotta, you know, put your cellphone in a container, it's just like going to the Capitol. So, the whole building is, is that way, they have an onsite courtroom right there, which is kind of interesting. So the whole building is, is that way, they have an onsite courtroom right there, which is kind of interesting. They financed it with a sales tax, and they, they use the logic down there that we use up here on sales tax because they are, immediately west of them is Kansas, just a little south of that is Oklahoma, a little bit further down is Arkansas. And they think that as much as forty percent of the retail that takes place in that county comes from those other places, so they decided, let's just let those other places help fund our, our juvenile facility, as well as a new courthouse. They have a half, was it a half cent or quarter cent? I can't remember.
I thought it was quarter cent.
Could be, quarter cent, whatever it was, the, the citizens voted some years ago to, uh, fund this place with a sales tax. And I think they've even renewed it once, maybe, anyway. You could add to that, Toby.
So it's an aid bed, uh, facility, which is what we're looking at, um, and you have the option to expand. You do not have a residential non-security unit, and you bring in some youth from the school district, uh, the school district helps offset some of the costs as a result of that. They have outdoor space, they have a half for basketball, um. They have a nice facility, it, it doesn't, it's not a park ward, it doesn't appear to be a juvenile office, it blends in nicely.
Have an onsite teacher who's paid by the school district.
We have an onsite, we have two onsite schools, they have one, uh, with alternative school classroom here in the form of detention. We do have a teacher provided by the school district who provides education to both sides of our building.
Okay. What else? They have a Sallyport.
They have Sally. They have an intake room, they have a padroom, so we move them from, out of control, they can put them in the padroom. There's no metal, no edges, the glass, and detention, they have a twenty-minute, uh, window and then a sixty-minute window. So some of the windows, the glass won't break for sixty minutes, the other doesn't break for twenty, they have related furniture. Their entities in their cells are all locked down, I think, I would like more cameras, more security. They have a very interesting fog system on their detention cells that when they file in, presents all of the demographics and the inside, the medication requirements and logs, um, that the mandatory check-ins have been made. Their TV is mounted way up high so that the kids can destroy it, so high, in fact, I don't know how they watch it, but that's.
They were able to knock out some of the, uh, ceiling fixtures and the half board with basketballs, or, right?
And the half board basketball, when they give them stuff to throw, then they knock out sprinklers and knock out lights and, and if it, if you torn up with this population, it's, somebody's bound to make a go at it.
And they did have, uh, their outdoor facility, though, is, is, is surrounded by the walls of the, different walls. They did have a Spider-Man there who made an escape by literally climbing the wall. Did you hear him talk about that?
I did not hear.
Yeah, uh, they actually had a fellow who went out every day and he, he looked like he just contemplated the walls, but he was actually saying, that brick sticks out a little further, that rock sticks. They, they ended up having a climbing wall without paying for it. Because he climbed out, they caught him within two hours down the street, but, yeah. These people are very ingenious, unbelievably ingenious.
It's very unbelievable, we were just talking about this, we were listening to you last evening about the ways that they will figure out to achieve goals.
Sounds like us growing up, I thought.
Now, they did have, the breakfast, lunches is, comes from the school district, is that right?
The school district provides, um, they have breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday, so they just have to provide dinner and then the, um, and they don't have a residential unit, so they just have to provide them to the detention unit the dinners and then the weekend meals, um, their youth specialist to cook those, and they just have a standard kitchen, like what you would find in a house. It's not a commercial kitchen, but then they're only serving eight at any time.
Okay, anything else? Session? Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, you ready?
I'm ready, I'm ready to.
Yeah, okay.
I'm ready to recess.
Yeah. Cuz then tomorrow, we just have, um. EMS and public works mainly.
Assessor.
Assessor.
Hey, damn.
And if Nick comes, then we'll.
Eight AM start.
Yeah.
Motion to stand in recess until four-thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First, Ken, you might need to, you might wanna make your, tell us what you wanna do, how you want to put salaries in the budget, we need to.
So, what did you say that? What'd you say the percent, Debbie, was if we took all of the?